Good evening Daytona Beach. And welcome to the July 21st, 2021 meeting of the Daytona Beach City Commission. We are delighted to have you with us this evening. At this time, I would ask that Ms. La Magna review the procedures for tonight's meeting.
Good evening. Agendas are available on the table in the lobby and at the front of the commission chambers. All the exhibits pertaining to items on the agenda are posted in the lobby. Please feel free to view the exhibits at any time during tonight's meeting. You are required to fill out a yellow form to speak before the city commission on topics on the agenda. Forms are available on the table in the lobby and in the front of the commission chambers. You must complete the sections that ask for your name, address, agenda item number, signature and date. The form must be completed and placed in the designated box. Item number seven is your opportunity to address the city commission concerning any item on the consent agenda. Please indicate on the yellow speaker sheet the agenda item number of the item or items that you are addressing. Items or discussions not listed on the consent agenda will not be heard during this comment section. Agenda items under item number nine are public hearings and citizens may speak at the designated time. Resolutions under administrative item number 10 are open for public comments and you may fill out a yellow form to speak when that item is called. Speakers will be allowed to speak for three minutes. When you approach the lectern, please speak clearly into the microphone and give your full name and address. The three-minute clock on the monitor above the dais will start running when you begin to speak. Pay close attention to your time. You will be told when your time has expired. Item number 12 is the public comment form, and this is the opportunity for the public to speak on any issue or topic that is not on the agenda. All citizens completing the green form will be allowed to speak for three minutes. When you approach the lectern, please give your full name and address. Disorderly conduct in the public meeting of the city commission. Article 2, Section 6238 of the City Code of Ordnance reads as follows. It shall be unlawful for any person to behave in a riotous or disorderly manner in any public meeting of the city commission or any committee, agency, or board thereof, or to cause any unnecessary disturbances therein by force, shouting, or any other action that is calculated to disrupt such meeting, order, refuse to obey any ruling of the presiding officer, or such meeting relative to the orderly process thereof. Please be courteous and respectful of the views of others. Personal attacks on the city commission, city staff, or members of the public are not allowed. Please silence cell phones and other wireless devices during the meeting. All conversation must take place either at the lectern or on the dais so that everyone can hear the business being discussed tonight.
Ms. La Magna, may we have a roll call?
Commissioner Henry.
President.
Commissioner Reed.
Here.
Commissioner Traeger.
Here.
Commissioner Delgado. Commissioner May.
Here.
Commissioner Cantu.
Here.
Mayor Derrick L. Henry.
Here.
Motion to excuse Commissioner Delgado.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. All those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those who are in opposition, same sign. Motion carries six zero. Excuse me. At this time, we will have our invocation led by Commissioner Reed, followed by the pledge of allegiance led by Commissioner Henry.
I will bless the Lord at all times. His praises shall continually be in my mouth. Let us pray. Grateful, grateful, grateful. Lord, we're so grateful for all that you've done, all that you're doing, and all that you shall do. We thank you, Lord, for a new day, a day we've never seen, a day that you allowed us to wake up and get up and experience life once again. Tonight, as we convene in the city of Daytona Beach on behalf of its issues and its citizens, we ask that you would guide us and lead us, that you would be with us and bless us. And Lord, we ask that all that we do would be pleasing in your eyesight. We lift up our first responders, we lift up those in the military, we lift up those who are in the services of medical services, Lord God, because COVID continues to be alive and well, but we know that your name is above every name, and it's above COVID-19. And Lord, we ask that you would banish that disease from our world in the name of Jesus. Lord, tonight, as we gather, we ask that you would help us to make the best decisions on behalf of this city. We pray, Lord, for not only our citizens and the staff of this city, but we pray for Bethune-Cookman University, Lord God. And we honor a man this evening who has served us for a lifetime, and we say thank you for Lynn Thompson. So now, Lord, bless this meeting, and bless those that are here, and bless those that are striving to still get here. We would be careful to give you all the honor, all the glory, and all the praise. In the mighty, matchless name of Jesus, I pray, let us all say, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll now move on to item number four, which is approval of the minutes of the June 16th, 2021 regular city commission meeting.
Second.
We have a motion, and then we have a second. All those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those who are opposed, same sign. Motion carries six zero. We'll now have our agenda. If there are any changes, our city manager will address them.
Yes, Honorable Mayor Commissioners, we have a few items. The presentation of the proclamation to Mr. Lynn Thompson, Addendum 6A. Addendum 8G addition, allocation of Bike Week sponsorship funds to the consent items. Add, addenda 8H, allocation of Bike Week sponsorship funds to the consent item as well. We're going to be asking for a continuation of agenda item 9A, the Daytona Beach LPGA 711 PD agreement rezoning to the August 18th, 2021 commission meeting at the request of the applicant. This concludes the changes to the agenda at this time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Motion to approve the agenda with the said changes.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion, we have a second. All those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries six zero.
Okay, we're ready for your presentation.
Commissioner Reed, you want to join me?
Welcome to Daytona Beach.
Tonight, we honor a man who has given his life to an organization that has withstood the test of time, Mary's House, the house that Mary built. So many of us this evening are a part of that legacy, we're a part of that tradition, a part of that history. Mother Mary, and all that she did, not only for this city, for this country, and for this world. Homegrown Lynn Thompson, one of Daytona's own, homeboy, came back home and made such a significant difference at that university where he earned his bachelor's degree, where some of you and myself as well, my bachelors and my second masters. You know, I often tell people that Bethune-Cookman saved my life because I didn't know who I was. Now, I knew whose I was, but I didn't know who I was until I entered that institution to learn, and now I depart to serve. Zone 6, my zone where I reside, coming back home as well. Lynn is one of those who has encouraged me, supports me, and always looks out for me. When I was in college, Mr. Mayor, I actually worked at their family funeral home. Can't you see me, Lynn and Shubert, running through there saying, "I got to put my stockings on! I need tissue! Which limousine is mine?" His mother nurtured me as if I were one of her own. And when I left to go to Ohio for graduate school, she bought me two suits and gave me a hundred dollar bill and said, "Call me whenever you need me." And Lynn called me once and said, "Mom is acting like she ain't got no sense. She's in the hospital. Would you call and talk to her?" That's how close I've been to this family, and they have just been a blessing to me, a blessing to this city, and a blessing to Bethune-Cookman University. Why don't you give them a round of applause? You know, very few people can turn around and come back from where they've come from and make such a significant difference. Many don't have that opportunity, but yet Lynn accepted that challenge, and he has served us well. And this evening, the city of Daytona Beach wants to say thank you. ESPN put us on the world. If you don't know where Daytona Beach is by now, something's wrong. Even when the lights went out, and we had that unexpected blackout, you really knew who we were after then. But Lynn, we're just so grateful, and I'm so honored to say that I know you, and I'm so pleased how the Lord has blessed you and blessed us through you to make Bethune-Cookman a better place. All the scholars, the athletic scholars that have gone through your program, your staff that has served with you to make a difference in those young people's lives. You know, people think that athletics is easy, but when you've got to study and do your sports and you've got to practice, it's very difficult. That's just like being in a band. You know, other things are expected of you other than just studying. And for those young people to be who they are today, to have entered to learn and now departing to serve because of the lives that have been touched by that athletic department through your leadership, we say thank you. Thank you.
Now, you all know that it takes a brave man to invite Paula. Because that was, that was an invitation. And so you don't, you usually don't want to follow all of that. But I, and it was originally deserved, and I thought that on our commission, that you needed to hear from her, and you needed to, because she understands, and she feels and she bleeds maroon and gold. She bleeds it, she lives it, she keeps us completely conscious of it. And now I have someone on the right to help with that too. But, you know, and I live that too, because I sleep with that. And she, she, in the middle of the night, it just sort of rubs off on me. And I was, you know, I was a beneficiary of Bethune-Cookman. I spent my childhood in NYSP program. Patrick is a Wildcat graduate, and when he was, when I was six years old, he was a year behind Lynn, he went to Bethune. So I think it should be noted that I knew at that moment that I was going to college because he was my model of possibility. And so I say with interim president Powell here, past interim president Grimes, I see Ms. Booker, and I see all of you here who are here to support your friend, our friend, Dr. Thompson here, also a brother to the community, but your armor bearer, and your best friend, and your partner, and brother who's been there for you, all of us. We're here to celebrate you, and I would be remiss if I didn't say that I wasn't, I'm not as prepared for this moment because you belong to us. You belong to Daytona Beach, not just a Wildcat. And I just came from Italy, bringing, preparing to bring the statue home, Dr. Powell and I. And Bethune is a special place in our community, and it is, Dr. Bethune herself, I see her as sort of our rudder, our centering place. I'm so excited that the statue is going to be where it is. But you all know what it means to enter that institution and to depart to serve. And then some of you are fortunate enough to come back and to give your whole being to the institution, and that's what you've done. You have given all of yourself to the institution. And, you know, I remember going to Moore's Gym, and I remember going to the Classic, and I remember the various teams and sporting events before you got there. You know, I went when I was seven and eight years old while you were a student. But after you came, things changed. And they, they didn't stay the same, you know? You know, some people come in and they lead, you know, sort of from the rear or from the middle, or, you know, they just follow along with what has been. Not you. Lynn Thompson came to Bethune-Cookman, and it may have been going like this, it may have did this, but it just took a steady incline under your leadership as it relates to athletics. And Commissioner Reed pointed to certain things that she said about how you all changed and helped to adopt and nurture her, and obviously you learn that from right at home. I've heard legendary stories about your father, legendary in my household, from people that I grew up with in the church, and things that he did, and the way that he was, and clearly your mother was the same, but it all rubbed off on you. And I know hundreds of people, literally, who have literally been shaped and nurtured by your love, your compassion, your care, your leadership, your fearlessness in the face of difficult times, and ability to embrace manhood and encourage that in other young men is legendary. And so while this proclamation, I think, needs to be read into the record, your record speaks for itself. And so I'm going to read this so that the record reflects what the record should reflect. But the reality is that we know that words on paper cannot adequately describe the majestic life that you have lived, and we as a community are greatly appreciative of that. If you would, please stand, and if all Wildcats would do as you all do, and we do what we do, and while I talk about it bleeding over onto me, I'm a Wildcat. As honorary doctorate, so I'm a Wildcat. Whereas, in recognition of Lynn Thompson Day, whereas Lynn Thompson, Daytona Beach native and a product of the greatest high school in the history of mankind, Mainland High School, graduated from then Bethune-Cookman College in 1980, and whereas in 1991, he became the school's athletic director just a few years after taking over at Bethune-Cookman. He became the first African-American to be named chairman of the NCAA Baseball Rules Committee. In 2015, he was named the vice president for intercollegiate athletics, and in 2018, he became the longest actively tenured NCAA Division One athletic director in the country. And whereas during his career, the Wildcats won a total of 71 championships, beginning with the '54 Mid Eastern Athletic Conference, MEAC, Crown, and a dynasty of 12 baseball championships in a 15-year span. And whereas Thompson is quoted as saying, "It has been my life's ministry to help build the brand of BCU and establish Wildcat Athletics as a comprehensive championship program, but most of all, develop student athletes into champions in life through their experiences in our program and at our university." Now therefore, I, Derrick L. Henry, mayor of the city of Daytona Beach, and on behalf of the city commission, do hereby proclaim Wednesday, July 21st, 2021, as Lynn Thompson Day in the city of Daytona Beach, and we thank him for his many years of dedicated service to both Bethune-Cookman University and our great city.
I'm truly humbled. Whether you know it or not, I learned my management skills in this building as an intern with then-city manager Howard Tipton, and I worked directly with the legendary icon James Huger. And I applied those skills at Bethune-Cookman because while we would have recruited great student athletes, we knew at the end of their careers, they would have become taxpaying citizens of this community. And many of them have gone on to leadership roles in the county, in this city, in the school system, and they have made this area much greater than it has ever been. I want to thank all of you who've come out, President Grimes, President Powell, our management team, I see Sandra Booker, I see Brian Griffin, Scott Armstrong, these masks make it impossible to see everybody. My family, my brother, Herbert Thompson, my sister, and tell my nieces, Stephanie, Lenora, my queen, Tasha. I don't know anything else to say but thanks be to God, who has given me this responsibility. And it has been the greatest ministry of my life, and it has grown grapefruit. And I pray to God that we will continue to grow grapefruit in new vineyards. But I thank you for this opportunity to stand before you. City manager Fietz, members of the city council, thank you for this wonderful moment. It has touched my heart, and it has given me great reason to continue to become a lead servant and to work. May God bless you.
Tonight, we honor a man who has given his life to an organization that has withstood the test of time, Mary's House, the house that Mary built. So many of us this evening are a part of that legacy, we're a part of that tradition, a part of that history. Mother Mary, and all that she did, not only for this city, for this country, and for this world. Homegrown Lynn Thompson, one of Daytona's own, homeboy, came back home and made such a significant difference at that university where he earned his bachelor's degree, where some of you and myself as well, my bachelors and my second masters. You know, I often tell people that Bethune-Cookman saved my life because I didn't know who I was. Now, I knew whose I was, but I didn't know who I was until I entered that institution to learn, and now I depart to serve. Zone 6, my zone where I reside, coming back home as well. Lynn is one of those who has encouraged me, supports me, and always looks out for me. When I was in college, Mr. Mayor, I actually worked at their family funeral home. Can't you see me, Lynn and Shubert, running through there saying, "I got to put my stockings on! I need tissue! Which limousine is mine?" His mother nurtured me as if I were one of her own. And when I left to go to Ohio for graduate school, she bought me two suits and gave me a hundred dollar bill and said, "Call me whenever you need me." And Lynn called me once and said, "Mom is acting like she ain't got no sense. She's in the hospital. Would you call and talk to her?" That's how close I've been to this family, and they have just been a blessing to me, a blessing to this city, and a blessing to Bethune-Cookman University. Why don't you give them a round of applause? You know, very few people can turn around and come back from where they've come from and make such a significant difference. Many don't have that opportunity, but yet Lynn accepted that challenge, and he has served us well. And this evening, the city of Daytona Beach wants to say thank you. ESPN put us on the world. If you don't know where Daytona Beach is by now, something's wrong. Even when the lights went out, and we had that unexpected blackout, you really knew who we were after then. But Lynn, we're just so grateful, and I'm so honored to say that I know you, and I'm so pleased how the Lord has blessed you and blessed us through you to make Bethune-Cookman a better place. All the scholars, the athletic scholars that have gone through your program, your staff that has served with you to make a difference in those young people's lives. You know, people think that athletics is easy, but when you've got to study and do your sports and you've got to practice, it's very difficult. That's just like being in a band. You know, other things are expected of you other than just studying. And for those young people to be who they are today, to have entered to learn and now departing to serve because of the lives that have been touched by that athletic department through your leadership, we say thank you. Thank you.
Now, you all know that it takes a brave man to invite Paula. Because that was, that was an invitation. And so you don't, you usually don't want to follow all of that. But I, and it was originally deserved, and I thought that on our commission, that you needed to hear from her, and you needed to, because she understands, and she feels and she bleeds maroon and gold. She bleeds it, she lives it, she keeps us completely conscious of it. And now I have someone on the right to help with that too. But, you know, and I live that too, because I sleep with that. And she, she, in the middle of the night, it just sort of rubs off on me. And I was, you know, I was a beneficiary of Bethune-Cookman. I spent my childhood in NYSP program. Patrick is a Wildcat graduate, and when he was, when I was six years old, he was a year behind Lynn, he went to Bethune. So I think it should be noted that I knew at that moment that I was going to college because he was my model of possibility. And so I say with interim president Powell here, past interim president Grimes, I see Ms. Booker, and I see Brian Griffin, Scott Armstrong, these masks make it impossible to see everybody. My family, my brother, Herbert Thompson, my sister, and tell my nieces, Stephanie, Lenora, my queen, Tasha. I don't know anything else to say but thanks be to God, who has given me this responsibility. And it has been the greatest ministry of my life, and it has grown grapefruit. And I pray to God that we will continue to grow grapefruit in new vineyards. But I thank you for this opportunity to stand before you. City manager Fietz, members of the city council, thank you for this wonderful moment. It has touched my heart, and it has given me great reason to continue to become a lead servant and to work. May God bless you.
Let it happen, let it make you cry.
Let's go Wildcats!
Everybody look here first.
Yeah, there you go.
You're good.
I'm good.
Come on.
I'm an old man on the block, so I don't like this.
There you go. Two, four, one, two.
Thank you.
Welcome Wildcats.
Welcome to Daytona Beach.
Tonight, we honor a man who has given his life to an organization that has withstood the test of time, Mary's House, the house that Mary built. So many of us this evening are a part of that legacy, we're a part of that tradition, a part of that history. Mother Mary, and all that she did, not only for this city, for this country, and for this world. Homegrown Lynn Thompson, one of Daytona's own, homeboy, came back home and made such a significant difference at that university where he earned his bachelor's degree, where some of you and myself as well, my bachelors and my second masters. You know, I often tell people that Bethune-Cookman saved my life because I didn't know who I was. Now, I knew whose I was, but I didn't know who I was until I entered that institution to learn, and now I depart to serve because of the lives that have been touched by that athletic department through your leadership, we say thank you. Thank you.
Now, you all know that it takes a brave man to invite Paula. Because that was, that was an invitation. And so you don't, you usually don't want to follow all of that. But I, and it was originally deserved, and I thought that on our commission, that you needed to hear from her, and you needed to, because she understands, and she feels and she bleeds maroon and gold. She bleeds it, she lives it, she keeps us completely conscious of it. And now I have someone on the right to help with that too. But, you know, and I live that too, because I sleep with that. And she, she, in the middle of the night, it just sort of rubs off on me. And I was, you know, I was a beneficiary of Bethune-Cookman. I spent my childhood in NYSP program. Patrick is a Wildcat graduate, and when he was, when I was six years old, he was a year behind Lynn, he went to Bethune. So I think it should be noted that I knew at that moment that I was going to college because he was my model of possibility. And so I say with interim president Powell here, past interim president Grimes, I see Ms. Booker, and I see all of you here who are here to support your friend, our friend, Dr. Thompson here also, a brother to the community, but your armor bearer, and your best friend, and your partner, and brother who's been there for you, all of us. We're here to celebrate you, and I would be remiss if I didn't say that I wasn't, I'm not as prepared for this moment because you belong to us. You belong to Daytona Beach, not just a Wildcat. And I just came from Italy, bringing, preparing to bring the statue home, Dr. Powell and I. And Bethune is a special place in our community, and it is, Dr. Bethune herself, I see her as sort of our rudder, our centering place. I'm so excited that the statue is going to be where it is. But you all know what it means to enter that institution and to depart to serve. And then some of you are fortunate enough to come back and to give your whole being to the institution, and that's what you've done. You have given all of yourself to the institution. And, you know, I remember going to Moore's Gym, and I remember going to the Classic, and I remember the various teams and sporting events before you got there. You know, I went when I was seven and eight years old while you were a student. But after you came, things changed. And they, they didn't stay the same, you know? You know, some people come in and they lead, you know, sort of from the rear or from the middle, or, you know, they just follow along with what has been. Not you. Lynn Thompson came to Bethune-Cookman, and it may have been going like this, it may have did this, but it just took a steady incline under your leadership as it relates to athletics. And Commissioner Reed pointed to certain things that she said about how you all changed and helped to adopt and nurture her, and obviously you learn that from right at home. I've heard legendary stories about your father, legendary in my household, from people that I grew up with in the church, and things that he did, and the way that he was, and clearly your mother was the same, but it all rubbed off on you. And I know hundreds of people, literally, who have literally been shaped and nurtured by your love, your compassion, your care, your leadership, your fearlessness in the face of difficult times, and ability to embrace manhood and encourage that in other young men is legendary. And so while this proclamation, I think, needs to be read into the record, your record speaks for itself. And so I'm going to read this so that the record reflects what the record should reflect. But the reality is that we know that words on paper cannot adequately describe the majestic life that you have lived, and we as a community are greatly appreciative of that. If you would, please stand, and if all Wildcats would do as you all do, and we do what we do, and while I talk about it bleeding over onto me, I'm a Wildcat. As honorary doctorate, so I'm a Wildcat. Whereas, in recognition of Lynn Thompson Day, whereas Lynn Thompson, Daytona Beach native and a product of the greatest high school in the history of mankind, Mainland High School, graduated from then Bethune-Cookman College in 1980, and whereas in 1991, he became the school's athletic director just a few years after taking over at Bethune-Cookman. He became the first African-American to be named chairman of the NCAA Baseball Rules Committee. In 2015, he was named the vice president for intercollegiate athletics, and in 2018, he became the longest actively tenured NCAA Division One athletic director in the country. And whereas during his career, the Wildcats won a total of 71 championships, beginning with the '54 Mid Eastern Athletic Conference, MEAC, Crown, and a dynasty of 12 baseball championships in a 15-year span. And whereas Thompson is quoted as saying, "It has been my life's ministry to help build the brand of BCU and establish Wildcat Athletics as a comprehensive championship program, but most of all, develop student athletes into champions in life through their experiences in our program and at our university." Now therefore, I, Derrick L. Henry, mayor of the city of Daytona Beach, and on behalf of the city commission, do hereby proclaim Wednesday, July 21st, 2021, as Lynn Thompson Day in the city of Daytona Beach, and we thank him for his many years of dedicated service to both Bethune-Cookman University and our great city.
I'm truly humbled. Whether you know it or not, I learned my management skills in this building as an intern with then-city manager Howard Tipton, and I worked directly with the legendary icon James Huger. And I applied those skills at Bethune-Cookman because while we would have recruited great student athletes, we knew at the end of their careers, they would have become taxpaying citizens of this community. And many of them have gone on to leadership roles in the county, in this city, in the school system, and they have made this area much greater than it has ever been. I want to thank all of you who've come out, President Grimes, President Powell, our management team, I see Sandra Booker, I see Brian Griffin, Scott Armstrong, these masks make it impossible to see everybody. My family, my brother, Herbert Thompson, my sister, and tell my nieces, Stephanie, Lenora, my queen, Tasha. I don't know anything else to say but thanks be to God, who has given me this responsibility. And it has been the greatest ministry of my life, and it has grown grapefruit. And I pray to God that we will continue to grow grapefruit in new vineyards. But I thank you for this opportunity to stand before you. City manager Fietz, members of the city council, thank you for this wonderful moment. It has touched my heart, and it has given me great reason to continue to become a lead servant and to work. May God bless you.
Let it happen, let it make you cry.
Let's go Wildcats!
Let's go Wildcats!
And we're going to move on to item number seven. This is public comments by people addressing the city commission. During this time, citizens have the opportunity to address the city commission on any item that is on the consent agenda. And my only speaker is John Nicholson.
John Nicholson, 413 North Grandview Avenue. Eight F LED lighting, Nissel Stadium. We just put this in seven years ago. They should not go that fast. I don't know whether we bought a lemon or whether we didn't pay enough. Either way, constantly throughout the history that I've been with the city, we are doing things over and over and over again. So I don't know if we're not buying quality or we're doing a system that you put out a bid and you take the cheapest one, whether it's good or not. I think we spent 12 years repairing the roof at Peabody. I think there's 21 roofs, separate roofs. And they were always leaking for 21 years. And finally, they did the whole thing right. So if this is the best LED that will last, then we get it. If it's not, and we're going to get another one in another 10 years and go through the problems, because the one we have now, we've been having problems with. I remember several times having coming to the podium and saying, "We need to fix it. We need to fix it." We cannot go through another 10 years because hopefully, that stadium will pay for itself. And it won't pay for itself if that LED lighting goes down. So hopefully, if this is the best that can go in, put it in. If it's not, go out and get the best so we don't have to go through this mess all over again. Thank you.
That was my only speaker for the consent agenda.
We have a motion?
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion from Commissioner Reed. We'll take a second from Commissioner May. No questions or comments. All those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those in opposition, same sign. Motion carries six zero.
Okay, we're going to move on to public hearings. Item number nine A is the Development Administrative Services Daytona Beach LPGA 7-11 Plan District Agreement. This is an ordinance on second reading. An ordinance amending the zoning map of the Land Development Code to rezone 2.3 plus or minus acres of property located at 2100 LPGA Boulevard from PDG Plan Development General to PDG Plan Development General, approving the Daytona Beach LPGA 7-11 Plan Development Agreement, authorizing use of the property as a convenience store with fueling facilities and a car wash, subject to certain conditions. Authorizing the mayor and the city clerk to execute the agreement, repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict herewith. And at the request of the applicant, they would like this item continued until the August 18, 2021, commission meeting.
Motion to continue to August 18 at the applicant's request.
Second.
We have a motion from Commissioner Reed and a second from Commissioner May. No questions. All those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries six zero.
Moving on to item nine B. It's the Public Works Department preliminary and final plat approval for Mosaic Phase Two. This is a resolution, quasi-judicial hearing. A resolution approving the preliminary and final plat for Mosaic Phase Two project, a single-family subdivision of approximately 157 acres of land located .5 miles west of LPGA Boulevard, northwest of Mosaic Boulevard, and south of Magenta Road, authorizing the city manager to sign the final plat and permit recordation thereupon, meeting certain conditions precedent and providing an effective date.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion from Commissioner Traeger and a second from Commissioner May.
And I do have Mr. Bobby Ball here on behalf of the applicant for any questions.
I have a question.
Mr. Ball? Are you? Okay.
Hi. I was just curious if we were going to be building out the sidewalks before the construction?
Typically, they'll be coming in afterwards with the home construction. And I think we're providing a bond for those.
I'm sorry. Yeah, if you could use the mic, I'm sorry, so we can pick it up for the record.
We don't normally build sidewalks in front of the homes first because then the home construction will damage them. So you normally put them in last. And so we're going to bond for the sidewalks.
For the phase two?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
And in order to complete that, we need a contract to come back for approval with the commission, the contract for plot recording. Is that correct, Mr. Morris?
Jim Morris, city manager, yes, sir, that's correct. And there is a bond that's been worked out. So we just need to wrap that stuff and bring it forward. Mr. Ball said typically, they don't build. The code requires that they do build. The bond is for the purposes of letting them have another way of addressing that. The commission has to approve that through the contract that the city attorney mentioned.
And thank you.
And I have no other speakers for this item.
All right, we have a motion and we have a second. All those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those in opposition, same sign. This motion carries six zero.
Okay, we're going to move on to item number 10, which is our administrative items. Item number 10A is the Budget Division setting the tentative fiscal year 2021-22 millage rate resolution. A resolution authorizing the notification to the property appraiser for advertising purposes, the City of Daytona Beach Fiscal Year 2021-22 proposed tentative operating millage rate of 5.5300, the current rollback millage rate of 5.3843, the voted debt service millage rate of 0.2394, the first public hearing date of September 8, 2021, on the tentative millage rate in proposed fiscal year 2021-22 budget and providing an effective date. Mr. Fred Coulter to report.
Hello, this is the first of the three formal events that we have to do to adopt the budget for next year. At this meeting, the city commission has to set a couple items. First is the advertising millage rate. This is the millage rate that goes out to the advertisers to all the property holders in the city. We're proposing an operating rate of 5.5300, as Latisha said. And we're proposing a voted debt service rate of 0.2394. We're also supposed to calculate, which is actually filling out a form provided by the state. So it's really a difficult calculation. It does it for me, of a rollback rate of 5.3843. So those are put on the things. And that's, these are effective caps on the millage rate. You can always go lower. We can't go higher unless we send out letters ourselves to everyone, which, so it's doable, but it's not something I'd ever recommend. The other thing we need to do is officially set the date of the first public hearing. Because of state law, we can't do it on the 1st of September, which would be our normally scheduled meeting for September. We have to push it off until the 8th of September. That's the way the state has windows for these meetings. Those are the two actions that we're asking for you to do on today's meeting.
All right, do we have any comments from the commission? Okay, no comments. Here's what I have, a few things I have to say. First of all, because we have a new manager, things have been done differently this year as it relates to the process that we normally go through as it relates to preparing for a budget. We didn't go through the normal planning process that we normally would. And so what I'm going to recommend is that we start out even above the proposed general fund operating and then have an objective to try to get below the rollback. But if we can't, because here's the point that I want to make. When we were at the meetings the other night, the number one thing that residents talked about outside of affordable housing really was roads. Okay? And that's a costly endeavor. And last year, you know, we put in more money than roads than we ever have. We really didn't spend it. But we did put it into the budget. But what I would like for us to be able to do, Mr. Manager and staff, is to be able to hold that line and develop a robust road improvement plan at that line. And so if we can hold that line, I think, and you guys can start to talk about it, because this is not something that we've really talked about as a commission. But if we can hold that line, and if it takes going up a little bit to do that, then that's what it takes. But I think it's the most important fiduciary responsibility that we have as a city to be able to put together a deep, serious road and sidewalk resurfacing program. So I'm okay with us not having a collective meeting to plan that out. If you want to, if you can, go through that and then start talking to each of us individually about it. But I do want to go through the budget in private with a deep dive. So let's prepare that. And the second thing is, we also added a lot of money as it related to demolitions in our capacity. And it's been, it's allowing us to be able to take down a lot of blighted properties. We don't always notice that, but this wasn't something that we always did. But it costs a lot more money to do that. And so that's also important to us as we try to clean up our blight. So I say that we start out at least where they're asking. But if you think we need to start out a little higher, let's do that. But protect ourselves so we can come back and have a conversation and make sure we can meet the objectives that I think we have.
Yeah, the items that you referenced, we did not cut those back down. The transportation funding and stuff, those requests were still in. I think it's...
What we did this year, the current year, was we were able to fund the transportation you was talking about with the money left over from the previous year that was unspent. We may be able to do that again next year because things were going slower. So we haven't spent all the money that we allocate. So we may very well be able to, even though it's not in our proposed budget right now, we may very well, with leftover money, be able to put in some more money next year. But we have talked to the Public Works Director, and he also thinks that we need to do the amount of money we did last year in perpetuity just to maintain our existing roads. This is a substantial increase over what we've done in the past.
Okay, so my point, my question is, do we have the money to be able to do that? Or do we need to change this number for now and let you go back and look it over?
Would you like for us to increase the millage?
I would like, I always have had, at least at this point, of a higher millage rate because we can always bring it down.
Well, I don't like just giving you, you know, we'll go through it, but...
But we have to set the millage.
You've got to set, I know.
We have to set an advertising millage rate, which is a cap, not the final millage rate, is the cap.
Okay, all right. Well, but my point is, we have to get to that same number. So you guys have to go back and figure that out. Because the other thing is, we didn't spend the money, but we got to start spending it. So we...
I think part of the problem with Public Works spending the money is that a Public Works road project is not something that you can sit there, throw money at Public Works, and the ground breaks the next day. They've got to do a lot of planning with that. And so even if they have the money, they have to actually work with it.
So I can be clear, as we go through the budget. The commission is requesting that we put the same amount of money in for transportation and demolitions that we put in the past year. Is that what I'm hearing from you all?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
I have a question. Are you proposing that, sorry, I got lost somewhere in there, that we're increasing the mill rate? Is that what you're going for?
Well, I'm proposing that as of tonight, that they be allowed to keep it at the proposed general fund operating number, if that's what it takes. But I don't, you know, they haven't... I just want to make sure we do not cut those numbers that we had. And so I don't know that we, I would like to get it down. But I'm not proposing to raise taxes. My objective is actually to lower them slightly, just as we did last year. But I don't know that that's possible with that ask.
Also, this is something related to federal government. I'm a little concerned with our CARES money, the way that they passed it with Treasury regulations. We can't use the CARES money to reduce taxes, and we don't have a clue what they mean by that in terms of property taxes. They may look at a drop in the millage rate, even if it increases our revenues as they drop just because they're separated from us. The whole trim process is foreign to federal government. So they, what we think of as a tax cut, they may not think of as a tax cut. That concerns me.
Okay.
So I would rather leave the millage rate no lower than it is now just because I'm worried we'll cut into our CARES funding, which we have good plans for.
Yeah, I understand the directive of the commission in reference to the transportation and the demolition. And so we will work through those items.
Okay.
Without raising the taxes.
Okay, so we'll stay at the proposed general fund operating for tonight? Sufficient?
Yes.
Okay, all right. If you guys are good with that. So we need a motion to that end. Question?
I just want to make sure that anything that we do, if we're going to be collecting extra funds from residents, that we, can we allocate them saying that a percentage is definitely going to roads, if we have to make an increase?
We can do anything we want like that. I've heard of, one of the cities is actually doing one mill just for public safety. It's allocated that way. So you have a lot of options of allocating the money that way.
Could we get some, could I get some information on that, please? If we were to allocate certain things? Only because I find that residents from past experience dealing with certain topics feel very comfortable when we say, "Hey, this is where the money is going specifically." And we can all be in agreement with that, and funds aren't moved for other things. That's all.
I can tell you that that will not be the process. We are going to go through the budget. If there's an allocation assigned to a certain thing, everyone will know that that allocation is going to be assigned to that area unless the commissioners in a public forum direct us to change those allocations. And so our goal is to allocate the funds appropriately. And if there are emergencies that we, that I have the authority to change. And it's not, Bob reminds me quite often, I don't have that much authority on what my expenditure level is. You will know the change. But if we do want to look at that in the future, that if you decide that, okay, as the mayor is saying, raise the mill rate at a certain time, and we want to put that one mill collected towards public safety, towards infrastructure, towards transportation, towards parks and rec, we can do that as a commission. You can direct us that that particular collection of the one mill goes towards public safety, or it goes towards infrastructure or parks and rec. So we can do that. And I think when we start having that retreat leading into our next year's budget, we will be able to identify exactly what the commissioners want and prepare the budget based on your requests.
Okay, all right. Do we have a motion for...
No, I need a motion in a second for the...
You have a motion in a second?
I do, I need one.
We need a motion, I'm sort of asking, do we have one for proposed general fund operating of 5.530? Okay. So I have a motion from Commissioner May and a second from Commissioner Reed.
That includes the date of the public hearing?
Yes.
Yes.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none? All those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries six zero.
Going to move on to item number 10B, which is the Development and Administrative Services Leisure Services Department, excuse me, Biketoberfest 2021 Private Property Master Plan Resolution. A resolution approving, a subject, a resolution approving subject to certain conditions, the Biketoberfest 2021 Master Plan for Outside Activities on Private Property and authorizing outside activities during Biketoberfest, October 14 through October 17, 2021, pursuant to City Land Development Code, Section 5.4.7.11, temporary outside activities associated with the festival, establishing conditions for all approved applications and uses and providing an effective date. And I do have Kay Galloway here for the Director of Marketing Design to report.
Jeez, really?
Thank you. Hi again, Kay Galloway. I'm here on behalf of the Biketoberfest Master Plan for the private property as submitted by the Daytona Beach Area Convention and Visitors Bureau and the Biketoberfest Advisory Committee. The Biketoberfest Advisory Committee facilitated and reviewed all of the applications for 2021, along with city staff. And in your packet tonight, you'll find the final applications in accordance to the master plan guidelines, and they're there for your consideration.
All right, just can't believe it's already here.
And I do have one public speaker for this item, Mr. Mayor, Mr. John Nicholson.
John Nicholson, 413 North Grandview Avenue. I know it's anathema to mention this, but I think it's time to think about canceling Section 17 that allows for outdoor vending for Bike Week and Biketoberfest. All right, I've been coming before you for almost 10 years now, asking that the, those people who get special benefits from the city for Bike Week and Biketoberfest, maintain their properties. Because originally, when we did this years ago, before you all were on the commission, the idea was that they got this money, they got this special benefits, to help pay their taxes and maintain their buildings. If they're not going to maintain their buildings, if they're not going to keep their buildings clean and neat, then they shouldn't have it. So I'm asking you, rather than cancel 17, find a way of letting them know that if they do not take some of this funds and paint their buildings, maintain them throughout the year, pick up the garbage, pull the weeds, repair their windows. We had one guy for 10 years had broken windows on his property. That's ridiculous. They don't maintain their property, and yet they expect us to continue this over and over again. We're really heavy into code for the last couple of years, and everybody's getting hit with code fines. I remember Craig went down with god knows how many police officers in code and went right down Main Street. And one of the gentlemen in there, nothing happened. A few little things here and there. The whole side of the building was mildew. And you could see it from A1A. And it was filled with mildew until after he died. His brother came in and finally pressure washed it. I'm sorry, he made a ton of money. All of them do, they really do. If they have a liquor license, they make a ton of money. Trust me, I was in the business. So I'm asking you to ask them to either put up or shut up. They either maintain it, because we can't have an, because Main Street, I'm sorry. Mayor, you've walked down it. It is not a well-maintained street. But yet they have the funds. We've given them the funds to maintain their buildings. And if they're not, then we take that privilege away from them. I'm asking you to, from this point on, let it be known that we are going to enforce, especially restaurant licenses. We've got 13 restaurants on Main Street, and people only know two of them, one of which is closed. So everybody, if you talk about Froggy's, Froggy's is a restaurant, and nobody knows that. You've got Main Street Station with a $99 grill. But you passed, or the previous commission, they must have $10,000 worth of kitchen equipment. And you list what kind. And if they don't have that, they cannot serve liquor. And yet we have, have to abide by what we set. Thank you.
That was my only speaker on this item. Did you sign up a sheet, sir?
Yeah, come on, you said first time, come on up, we'll help you.
We'll just have you fill out one after you speak.
My name is Trajan Amoj.
Yes, sir.
I know we are here because we care. We are in the same building together. As far as growing up, being a youngin', under you all, it's not a lot of young people that really care. You know what I mean? We all into our phones, music, this and that. The knowledge is with the elders. Once our elders, you know what I mean? The knowledge is gone. Not being properly taught. Not just, color doesn't matter. A few percentage of, 1%, 2%, 3% is care about. Green dollar, no color. We have lack of knowledge. We're not getting properly informed, taught about what we need to do as growing up, taught about stuff like this, or even taught the laws in school. It's mandatory for us to go to school, but it's not mandatory for schools to teach us law that we have to obide by, oblige by. Like, I'm getting smacked in the face with laws that I never even heard of. I'm getting up by a law that I never even knew existed. I know 2 plus 2, and I don't use, we use basic math or algebra. You know what I mean? Like, we're not getting properly informed. I don't know what the government is. I know we, the people, go to work, have a little fun on the weekend, send off our family members to the Army, wishing that they come back home. Feel like we're living in a 1%, 2%, 3% monopoly. A lot of us feel like that. What can we do? We come up here and it seems like a lot of people who take stance, a lot of things that happen to those type of people. So what do a lot of people do? I cry, run, never speak. We all have seen, a lot of people seen the movie Purge. I would hate for that to happen. A lot of people are in fear for that. A lot. A lot of people. Me being one, I would not want to be a part of that. Would not. Not for the little ones, because they have nothing to do with, nothing that we care about. They go to school with their colored friends, all colors, laugh, giggle, dap each other up, hug each other, share a lollipop. I, a lot of people are confused. A lot of people are in fear. I door dash, I'm on business, LLC is licensed and insured. I deal with a lot of regular people that are in fear. And I step to their door and it's like a feeling.
Appreciate what you said, but in the future, when you come, we're on a specific item, so you have to speak to that item. Then at the end of the meeting, if you have a general topic that you want to speak on, you can do that at that time.
Taught that in school.
I know.
I'm, but thanks for teaching me.
And I'll be happy to talk with you after the meeting or at a later time. You did, yeah. Okay.
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 I don't have any more speakers for this item?
All right. We have a.
I don't think I have a motion.
I need a motion. All right, we have a motion, we have a second. Any discussion from the Commission? Let's keep in mind some of the things that Mr. Nicholson discussed, and some of it I'll discuss later in the meeting as it relates to the responsibility of each business to take care of the, part of the sidewalks that their business is adjacent to. And not just, everything isn't just code, you know? And we do have rules that regulate that, that I don't think we're doing an adequate job of enforcing. So I don't often agree with much of what John says, but I think I agree with some of his points tonight on two different occasions.
Your staff is working on, staff and administrative services have taken input from many citizens as well as you all to prepare updates going into the next year's master plan. But because it was so close in the past two months, based on what you all had submitted to them, they were not to include them. But next year, they're adding certain things to the master plan and also for the businesses going forward of how they utilize those vacant lots. And I know that, Mr. Morris, if he wants to, you want him to say anything, he can, but they are working on those things you're talking about.
Deputy City Manager, briefly, we have revised standards, they're in the works now to come forward to y'all. But subjects were raised tonight that aren't necessarily addressed perhaps in the way that you wish to see them, so we'll have those before you. You can give us input. We've got time because we're really heading now for Bike Week 2022 is the next event. And the margins, because of the way things overlap, as you said, Mayor, it seems like it was yesterday. It always does seem that way. So we're trying to be tomorrow, that you get a chance to see tomorrow as opposed to look back. We'll bring that forward very shortly. They're finished and ready for y'all to take a look at. From what I've heard tonight, I think we may be going back to do some more work, but y'all give us the direction, that's what we'll do.
If I might interject, since we're talking about businesses and them keeping their properties up to par in front of them, we also have a ruling in regards to signage and flags and all of that, and we have not been as strict as we should be. I mean, sometimes you drive down Nova Road and it looks like a circus. You know, you've got tents up and you've got all these little flaggy things on sticks. And I know a young lady came before us once before, their car washed on Bellevue and said, how could we hold her accountable when we weren't holding others accountable? So we need to be mindful of that as well. We do have something in the books that, that talks about what types of signage they could have out front as well.
No question, ma'am, you're right.
Okay. All right.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Yes, ma'am?
I have a question. This speaks to all of it. So, you know, we tell people the same thing, and maybe Mr. Jagger can we end on this? We tell people the same thing every year, please don't do A, B, C, D. This ties into the chronic violator type concept. Can we pull that into anything at all, the idea that we've been working on, especially for the business sector and some residences too?
So anyone who violates the code is adjudicated to have violated the code is automatically prohibited from participating in the Bike Week Master Plan. That's already part of your guidelines and your LDC requirements. I think the amendments, which Mr. Morris is speaking of, will also address current violations and maybe expand on that concept.
If I may. Jim Morris again, and request to that part of it, what we've been working toward is using this plan as a way to get people to come into compliance, because we've had recalcitrant people that wouldn't do anything. And you may remember the little laundromat. It's so ironic, the guy came in, fixed it up, and I worked with him personally on a separate issue because he wasn't, he missed the Bike Week stuff. And so if you get done in time, get a CO, get your work done, you can do another thing in relation to Bike Week. They did it. They did a great job with the building.
They did.
Turned right around and let it go just right back, almost like it was. It was amazing to me. I wouldn't ever see it, it was disappointing. But my point is, in respect to what Mr. Jagger alluded to, we're allowing people, if they have a violation and they want to participate, they've got to get finished, complete, and in compliance prior to the event, or they are excluded.
Can we add something to that, please? Or an idea that I?
So, if I might, and certainly he's the chair, we're going to bring all this stuff back to y'all another night for you to see where you can deal with it then, and certainly we'll take all the input you want to send us in emails or anything.
To make it easier and faster for us, I've been speaking with some code people about this. I'd like them to be able to, I'd like us to, that they've got to stay in compliance for a period of time, not just in compliance for a day, but it has to be in compliance for six months to a year, but there's got to be a time period so that we can prevent exactly what you're speaking of. Come into compliance, everything is forgiven, and then you do it again, and then we're back where we started. Is that possible?
It is. You are the City Commissioner of Daytona Beach, everything that you want to do, I think, is possible.
Okay.
Thank you, ma'am.
All right, thank you.
And I do have a motion and a second for this one.
Okay. I'll just conclude that matter by saying that I think that there's a will, and a large part of what I'm going to talk about at the end, to make Main Street greater. And I think we have that will on this Commission. But we have to, you know, you guys have to help us and bring it to us in a way that we can codify it and then enforce it. And I'm, we're counting on you to do that. Okay. Okay, we have a motion, we have a second. All those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries six zero.
Okay. We're going to move on to item 10C. It's the Development and Administrative Services Cultural Services Department, Biketoberfest 2021 Public Property Master Plan. This is a resolution. A resolution relating to Biketoberfest 2021 from October 14th through October 17th, 2021, Providing for Certain Parking and Traffic Uses and Regulations, Spending Parking Regulations in the Commercial Areas of the Controlled Parking District from October 14th through October 17th, in accordance with Section 94-218D of the City Code, Authorizing the City to Operate Paid Parking Lots at Various Locations in the Main Street Area, Authorizing Various Outside Activities on Public Property and Providing an Effective Date. Second.
Take a motion from Commissioner May and a second from Commissioner Kent, too.
I have no public speakers on this item.
Oh, okay. All right, any comments?
I just have a question. We don't have any last minute allocations for. People who didn't meet the deadlines or anything like that this year, correct?
You actually have one. I think the Tragers submitted on July 16th, we had an April deadline, and if the Tragers are going to be included in the plan, they've got to be accepted by decision of the City Commission.
Okay. All right.
Are they in the plan currently?
Presently, no, it was filed late, and it's not a part of what was reviewed by the Chamber and not part of what we presented to you tonight. It's outside the approval, and that's where it stands presently. And ordinarily, the applicant would request it, that's why I did not bring it up.
But we should handle, if that will be handled at all by the Commission, it should be handled separately because Commissioner Trager would need to recuse herself from that vote. So the vote before you on this motion is for the master plan as presented, absent the Trager parcel.
Okay. All right, we have a motion and a second, and we'll assume that will come back at the next meeting, a change or another meeting in the future.
Just to consider the Trager application if you so wish.
Okay.
And if this Commission wishes.
All right, okay.
Today, right?
You could do it today if you wish, bring it up. I need you to have those votes separate, is all I'm saying. So let's go ahead and vote on the item now. If you wish to speak to that, now would be a good time if the mayor approves.
I approve.
And we can take a separate vote for that.
And I'm sorry, excuse me.
I'm sorry, thank you.
We're going to vote on this now, right?
All right, yeah, let's vote on this, that's before us, and then we'll come back to that. All right, we have a motion before us and a second. All those who are in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those in opposition, same sign. Motion carries six two. Okay. Is there an addendum to the Bike Week plan that we want to discuss now?
Well, we've always had the same one, and I guess because of pandemic or something, we did not get any notification. And it's basically the same thing. We talked with Lori Campbell Baker, and she talked with Jennifer, and they talked with the city. And from what I understand, everything's okay because it's the same thing that's been going on.
Yes, okay.
Jim Morris, Mayor. Commissioner Trager, we haven't reviewed the application because it was submitted late. I know there's some work that still needs to be done to the application to make it complete, which we can work with you to do that, presuming the Commission votes tonight to accept the application. But it isn't something that just rolls from time to time. It's a complete application each time for each party that does it. And a part of what we do as we go to the review process with the Chamber and the CDB is that we look at the applications, they look at the applications, and we all work to get complete sets of information so that when you come to the approval and when it comes to you from the respective bodies, which Rose and I work with both groups, it comes to you complete and ready, and we can tell you what is or is not done. In this case, it's an incomplete application which needs to be completed, and we'll get it done quickly if the Commission elects to proceed, but presently that has not been done because it was late and it's not a part of your.
Well, it was late because we did not get any notification.
Yes, ma'am, I realize.
Usually they send some letters out, but for some reason we didn't get any.
I'm not trying to be punitive as it relates to what you did or didn't do, Mr. Trager. It's from a timing perspective.
Okay.
We deal with everybody in the same fashion.
So, I have a question. Sorry, still. Can I ask a question? So, we're discussing this right now?
We are discussing it, but.
Sorry.
Before you go, are you, are you, are you done explaining or you have any other?
Well, if there's any other questions or something.
Okay.
But like I said, it's whatever we've been doing for all the years before, it has no changes, and we didn't receive notification, otherwise it would have been sent in on time like usual.
Okay.
When we found out about it, we contacted the Convention Visitors Bureau, and they were working with us, and then they sent it over to the city. That's as far as we know.
We do have the application, it was just, we received it. My notes show that we got it July 16th.
Well, we wouldn't be able to vote on approving the application without it being complete anyway.
Yes, sir. So my point is.
We wouldn't be able to direct you to entertain the application.
Yes, sir. So if you, if the Commission should elect tonight to consider the request at a subsequent meeting, before it comes to you, we will make sure that it is a complete application, all the appropriate things that need to be done have been done. We wouldn't bring it back to you incomplete. I mentioned to you and to Ms. Trager tonight that it's incomplete because that is the present status, and I don't want you to proceed on a mistaken set of facts that aren't correct.
Got you. Okay, Commissioner May?
So, you know, there are times when I really think twice before I say something, but I just, I have to say it. There have been other people have come before us, and we have had a hard time, some of them are even here in the room right now, where they've submitted their applications late. And I recognize that they, you know, they were allowed to come in, but it was, it was a challenge for them. I mean, they had to really work at it, and we really were, we questioned them significantly about, you know, hey, you had an opportunity to do it. And I would hate for the community to think that because we have a City Commissioner that we're giving anything special or a waiver of any sort. And I sometimes feel bad about, I mean, I see somebody right here who submitted some stuff late and literally had to beg and plead to be allowed to come back in. And I don't forget those things. So I just, my ruling is always the same, my thoughts are always the same, what's good for one is good for all. And I just want us to have an honest conversation about that, and especially about perception and how things look. And I might be, I'm willing to put myself out there, but I have to speak my mind.
I respect that.
But I believe in the previous years, we have allowed some to come in late. So.
If I may, Mr. Mayor, from the perspective of staff, I promise you, we deal with everybody in the same fashion. We do not distinguish one way or another. And in respect to what we can bring or not bring to you, we've always noted that. The discretion is always with the Commission. We're in an administrative position, and I've had people say to me, couldn't you do this or that? And my point is, to those people that would say that, you don't want administrators that freely just decide how they'll do it today, because that's when you get someone treated fairly and someone else treated unfairly. And the object that we have is whether you like the procedure or you don't. It's the same for everyone. We do not distinguish. And we do our best to get everyone to the table and get it done, and the Chamber and CDB does that as well. We're not any different here. What the Commission decides to do, I have no perspective on whatsoever, other than procedurally for us to proceed, the decision has to come from you that we should proceed. If you elect that we should not proceed, then we won't go a step further.
If I may.
Go ahead.
Yeah, I just wanted to ask the question. At any point in time, have we had applications come in late and we proceeded to bring them to the elected body?
They have come in late, but they have not come to approval for the elected body unless the Commission elected to take them as an exception.
But we have had that take place.
Yes, sir, that has happened previously, that has previously occurred.
Almost, I can't think of a time when we didn't actually accept anyone.
In the time I've been doing it, I know there's always been something less and less as we've gone forward, but there always seems to be something.
Yeah, I would not, I mean, I must be honest, we accepted one person two years in a row late. So to me, it's not an anomaly to accept her or allow her to put the application in and allow her to complete it, because you may have some folks who feel that she should[1749.06] be held to a higher standard. I don't believe in that either. The standard is the standard. So I mean, we have allowed people in the past to come late. I don't recall rejecting anyone late, although we, maybe we should have, but we have not. Commissioner Reed, you had a comment?
Yes, you probably heard my tone when I asked, was there going to be a late application? And I do have concern with that having to be asked and not being revealed. And you said you were saving that for some reason.
No, ma'am. I didn't say that. What I said is, the applicant ordinarily requests it. The staff does not become an advocate for anyone that the applicants are required to do that. That is why I said that, not because it was a secret.
But I think I also heard you say something about you weren't going to bring it forward because the applicant would do that. Didn't you lead in with you weren't bringing it forward?
I said, the words I specifically said are that the applicant ordinarily brings it forward, which is why I did not say anything.
And that's what I just said. All you did was reverse what I said. I said, you did not bring it forward because the applicant normally brings it forward.
That's a true statement.
Okay. Then I don't know why we're repeating ourselves.
I think because the inference theme is if something was wrong or secret, which is not true.
And we're not questioning what you're doing. And we're not saying what you're doing is wrong. What we're just saying is that we continue to have late applications. And what I'm, and what I'm saying is... Yeah, we continue to have them. And what I'm saying is, one was not revealed that is in the works until I asked, was there one? That's what I'm saying.
And...
It doesn't require response.
Okay.
And I hear you, Mr. Mayor, about not holding ourselves at a higher standard, although the public may do so. And yes, I think the person left the room who we approved two times for being late in the past couple of years. My one concern is, though, that this is every year, and it's during the same time of year every year. And I don't think we necessarily have to wait for a notification. We should be asking in advance because it's the same time every year. So even if we consider this, I think for future record, that we should be asking in advance if we don't hear from anyone, particularly if you want to participate. And I'm not addressing you, because you can look at me like that.
I'm just, I'm listening to what you're saying.
So that's my concern. Now, whether we bring this, when we win and if we bring this, then my other concern is, it's not even complete tonight, when I'm asking, do we have a one that's out there? So I don't know how fast we're going to do this, because this takes place, we're approving it tonight. So how long is it going to take for that application to come before us to, for consideration, to approve?
It all depends on what the applicant does. That's always the case.
Okay. If that takes too long, then I'm not for that, if that takes too long.
And, and, and don't get me wrong, if we choose to establish, excuse me, a standard that says we're not going to take any late, then that's just what the standard is. But it hadn't been the standard as of yet.
So we may want to consider that.
Yeah.
We may not want to start it tonight.
Yeah, yeah.
But we may want to consider.
So from my understanding, then, the deadline is not the deadline and has never been the deadline.
The deadline has always been the deadline. There have always been people that missed it. And they have to come to the Commission to ask for relief. We can't, as staff, give them the relief.
And maybe there needs to be more of a firm, because the deadline, deadline isn't set by us. You know, maybe they need to do more firm announcement of the deadline because more and more people want to participate.
Enforce the deadline. We have a rule or make an extension and change the deadline. But this deadline, additional deadline, additional deadline, when there are people who work very, very hard to meet the deadline.
This, I'm sorry, but your characterization, characterization is incorrect. There is a deadline. There is a process for someone that misses the deadline to ask the Commission for relief. And it is the person asking it, because if we adopt the position suggested by Commissioner Reed, it would be that we become the advocate for the applicant, which is not the position that we are in. So we don't do that. Had we done that, you'd wonder why we weren't doing it for everyone. The Chamber and CDB accept the applications and manage the intake. That's the way it's been arranged since before the time I came here. Are the deadlines known? They are known. They're published and so on. Does everybody find them out for one reason or another? People may not or do not, but it's certainly publicly available. Call to City Hall anytime you want to ask for a deadline. Rose Askew will give you every piece of information that you want to have. That's where we're at as city staff. We work for the Commission, and we bring things to you. We don't present on behalf of someone. We simply present what we have. So that's why I didn't bring it forward any more than I did. I answered your question because it was there.
So I think I understand it differently. So really, the whole process begins and finishes with the CDB, and then they give you a package, and then we just go through the package at the end.
That's partially true. The applications are submitted for ones that are incomplete. The staff is reviewing those things, the CDB staff as well as city staff, to see if they are complete. And when they are complete, then, and people actually submit additional information. So that when the CDB and its group reviews, and we attend those reviews, collectively, there is a decision as it relates to those various applications. And anyone that's an applicant can also attend those reviews. There must have been about 35 of us at the Speedway this year for this, to clear this item to come forward. And the time was delayed some because of the other things that have happened in, issue business-wise, in terms of when we reviewed it and brought it to you. But it was the normal process otherwise.
We have always, in past years, been included with the SAMA festival permit. And we were not under, we were under the impression that we still were, until we found out that it was not included in it.
So, and SAMA is primarily run by Turner Heims, as you know. And Ms. Heims was there at the meeting that we went to for CDB. And Ms. Heims regularly calls me in respect to issues that she may have with things, as Ms. Heims has heard. I field a lot of phone calls as well in respect to questions and what people want to know. There's no effort whatsoever to do anything except be transparent, do the work, and bring a clean product to you that you can deal with in an efficient fashion.
And we understand that. We're not questioning that. But what I think we could do, although CDB does the initial application, application and what have you, is maybe because it says Daytona Beach Bike Week, and everybody thinks it's our baby, maybe we should help advertise their deadline. You know, because they're not doing a very good job if people keep missing the deadline every...
We actually do that.
We do?
Yes, ma'am.
Well, we don't do a very good job of advertising all the time either. But, but...
I'm not in that part of the business, but that's, that is what happens.
Right. So we need to look at that.
Honorable Mayor and Commissioners, I just want to put some timelines to make sure we're, I understand what we're doing, so we don't have this problem moving forward. The, the group provides, sends out the information, they give the applications. Once they've gone through them, to make sure they meet the appropriate information, the document, we pass it on to your, your team. You review it to make sure it meets our standards.
It's really more like this in this process. We work with everybody. As the applications are submitted, it's a joint effort of Chamber or CDB, depending upon which event, and city staff working together, going back and forth.
If you don't approve an application or it doesn't meet the standard, how does that person or that group know that it does not meet what we need?
It comes to the Commission with an exception to the approval. So if you're not approved or you've got a reason that you want to ask for a waiver, and you, the Commission has had those, I know, Mr. Fietrich, you haven't seen this before, where you had a recommendation for approval of a mass of applications, so two or three, they were out for some reason or another, and each applicant had the opportunity to plead their case. And the Commission has decided those. I think the majority have been approved. I don't have a specific recollection. I just remember the general events.
So what the Commissioners are requesting, that we set an actual deadline.
Which, which we have. And those are ordinarily the ones, the ones that are somehow wrong or out of key, are ones that are timely submitted, timely reviewed, with a timely opportunity to determine yes or no, or how to make it a yes if we don't have the ability to say yes. We do all of that already. But there is invariably somebody that misses.
But the policy affords the opportunity that if a person hasn't submitted an application, it can come to the Commission.
Absolutely.
Okay.
And it also affords someone that missed it altogether to ask for an exception.
Staff has done nothing inappropriate or wrong, and no one is suggesting that you've done your job to a T. We have a choice as a Commission, and we have to make decisions. And I'm a permissive fellow by nature and want to get the yes. Some people just say, you didn't make the deadline. The rest of the people made the deadline. It's what your choice is. So if you bring it to me, and the person is in compliance, and they're not violating our rules, and they have residents and business folks here, I'm pretty much going to say, let them in. But Commissioner Reed is there on time every day. It's six, this week at 5:59, she had the manager call to me to make sure that I was coming to the meeting. Of course, I came into the meeting exactly at 6 o'clock, because I sit in my car at 5:55 until 5:59. I get out of my car, and I walk into the meeting. It's kind of the way it rolls. And so, you know, we all, but, and I understand. So if we decide we want to make a standard and stick to that, fine. But at the end of the day, it is our decision. And so if you guys want to say no to this, we voted up, the six or seven of us will vote on it and decide. I'll probably be voting yes, as long as everything else is good.
And should the Commission vote yes, it will be processed as quickly as possible, and we will get it finished and back to you.
Okay. Yes, I have a speaker.
I do have a speaker.
Do we have a motion?
Do we have a motion?
May I suggest a motion and give me your feedback? But I would suggest a motion to extend the deadline until your next meeting for all applicants, not just Ms. Trager. And that way, you've opened the door for anyone.
Would you please state a specific date, Mr. Trager?
Whatever, the next meeting. I don't know the date offhand. Tish, what's our next Commission meeting? Is that sufficient?
It's August 4th is our next City Commission meeting.
That may cause, with, with, with opening up, you may get a lot of people that it's going to cause for all of these different groups to get back together and review those documents from the Chamber to CDB. What is it?
I'm, when you look at the time, the lead time that's absorbed in doing this to get this to you tonight, we're going to start on Bike Week very, very soon.
Yeah.
And the lead, it's, you got an exception that's within the rules. I understand your point, but if you open the Oklahoma, Oklahoma Land Rush gates again, it's, it's chaotic.
I'm certainly not aware of the scope of, you know, what that might involve. I would assume it would not be great, since there are only so many businesses on Main Street.
We don't know until you do it, and then we may be sorry, is the point.
Well, it's up to your discretion, just a suggestion.
All right.
I don't know if they could do it in two weeks.
Well, the Tragers only have to fix their application.
That's all there is.
You can make it until, what's the date, today?
Today's the 21st.
Does it take you a week to get it in? Can you do it within a week?
We'll, we'll work, we'll work with them in the morning.
Let's make it on the 28th. Give them one week. And then it's closed off in one week. Everything is done. Okay? That's a part of the motion. Do we have a motion? We need a motion.
I'll make the motion.
Okay.
Okay. Got a motion with Commissioner Kent, too. Who's the second?
Commissioner May.
Commissioner May.
And then I do have a speaker.
All right, Ms. Murphy. Thank you, sir.
Yeah, that's right.
Sandra Murphy, 136 Park Avenue. Actually, I'm confused what the motion is that I am speaking on. I don't think that's clear. As an interested observer and somebody who doesn't get any official notification, I've been going to Bike Week meetings over the past several years. It is very easy to know when it's happening. It's a traditional timing. It is something that if you have done it before, you can do it again, and it should not take you but a moment. And I just feel like this is a situation where folks could well believe that a Commissioner is taking advantage of their position in order to get favorable treatment. And I don't think that that is advantageous for people to perceive our city that way. So that's my comments.
That was my only speaker on this item.
Excuse me. I have a question. Didn't we say this, because this is all new to me? I haven't been up here. But didn't we say that we have done this for other?
And everyone knows.
Just not, okay.
Exactly. We said it. Everyone knows that we have. And I, I just want to be on record as, as, you know...
And we've never turned anyone else down.
Not that I know of. I don't recall ever turning anyone down. I don't recall.
I'd just like to move forward, please.
Okay. All right. We have a motion. We have a second.
And Mayor, may I restate the motion, just so we're clear? Yes, and, and also, Commissioner Trager will need to recuse herself and state the basis for her recusal and identify the property. Why don't we take care of that first?
Okay. Commissioner Trager?
Yes.
If you want to state what your, your recusal.
Because we own some of the property.
Could you state the property address, please?
There's a number of, number of plat, parcel numbers. It's a field and back of some of the stores that we've been doing this for, ever since the beginning.
You can read it. Read it to the record.
I can't see that.
He's going to read them into the record, sir.
And this will come back before us?
Yes, ma'am.
For approval?
It will come back. Jim Morris, Deputy City Manager, the parcel numbers owned by the Tragers that are affected by your decision are, it's going to take a little bit, 5338 52000211312, Mary McLeod, Bethune Boulevard. Next number, no address, 5338 5200150. Next number, 5338 52000080. The next, 5338 5200201, 5338 5100030. That address is 316 Mary McLeod Boulevard. The next and last, 5338 51000060322, Mary McLeod, Bethune Boulevard. And I will submit this sheet that I'm reading from to the clerk.
Thank you.
For your record.
And Mayor, as I understand the motion, the motion is to extend the deadline for submission of Bike Week applications until July 28. Is that correct?
Just not...
No.
Oh, no. Okay.
What is the motion, then?
They just want just this applicant in.
Okay. So the motion is just to extend the deadline for Commissioner Trager until 7/28. Is that correct?
See, that, that to me, that, that to me, just, just to all applicants that are already in the, that are already in.
The ones that have been submitted that have officially...
Yes, sir. And this is the only one that's out. The others have all been addressed and completed.
See, but to me, when we do that, it meets Sandy's, Sandy's criteria of saying that we're making an exception because of that. Whereas if we made a seven-day exception, it just allows people to come in for those seven days.
Well, we can do it.
I do have a quick question. Mr. Mayor, in the past, when there was a applicant that did not meet the deadline, was there a motion made to allow for any other individuals or for those that are already in the hopper to come through?
There has been one instance where the deadline was extended about, I want to say, six days, seven days. It was a very short period of time. So someone that perhaps somehow missed, had a chance. So I think it was like five or six days, if I recall. I don't remember the specific number of days.
But was it open to everybody to see?
Yes, sir, it was in that case, for that limited period of time, which in, I think, probably, you said the 28th is, what, a week from Friday, correct?
That's a week from today.
Yes.
A week from today?
A week from today.
Let's make it till the 28th, and that's...
Based on the attorneys.
Yeah, okay, I got you.
All right. So the motion is for all applicants.
Applicants.
An extension of deadline for all applicants until July 28.
Well, just accept that as the, as the motion.
Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. And we have a second to that effect?
Yeah.
Yes.
Commissioner May was the second on that.
All right. We have a motion. We have a second. All those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye. Those opposed, same sign.
Was there no public comment?
Oh, I'm sorry.
We had our public comment.
We're done. Okay, we're done. Okay, thank you. I'm sorry.
All right. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries five-zero.
Okay.
All right.
So now we get to move on to comments and inquiries from the City Commission, City Manager, and City Attorney. And we start with Commissioner Henry tonight.
No. No comment. Okay, where, where are we now? Commission comment? Commissioner Henry, and it starts with you. No sidebars.
She's trying to figure out if she said no on her front. I know, I was the only one to answer. So I was like, okay.
I didn't hear a no. It was a six-zero, five-zero vote. One recusal. Okay. Commissioner Henry, do you have any?
No comments tonight, Mr. Mayor.
Oh, good, because I'll be taking yours. Commissioner Reed?
You can take mine as well, Mr. Mayor. I think I've said enough this evening.
Thank you for your consideration. My problem. Appreciate.
Ma'am? Oh, absolutely. Yes, ma'am.
Okay, where do I begin? I have copious amounts of notes here. Okay, first thing is, Commissioner Reed and I are still doing the children's and families pool party, August 7, from 2 to 6 at both pools. We're both sponsoring that, so we hope you attend. The last one was success. We hope to have more people out there. I wanted to do a quick thank you to Captain Loomis and also Captain Lee, as well as County, for, and also Chief Young, for their work with regard to Veterans Bridge. I've had some reports back from residents on beachside, talking about the homeless situation that was being, that we encountered underneath the bridge, both on the side of the Chamber they just left, and then also the resident side. And we've happened to clean it up. So thank you so much. I would like to know, are we planning on doing anything with video surveillance? Have we moved forward on that at all?
Scott Lee, Police Captain, with the police permit. Yes, so we, since the last meeting, we've had two different meetings out there. We met with County staff, with the folks who are in charge of the Parks and Rec, I believe it's the department. I can't remember the official name, but they're in charge of that, that maintenance of that area. And during that conversation, they brought up, and we discussed, the benefit of having some cameras out there for us to be able to surveil that area, make it easier for officers to be able to see in that area without having to venture down under the bridge. And they wanted to invest in that, that type of equipment to be able to do that. Through that conversation, we kind of had a group conversation where we thought it would be most beneficial if they, if we could coordinate together and maybe install our cameras, since we're the doing, the ones doing the enforcement. So we are in the process of kind of getting that together, what that would look like, and getting it to them. So hopefully, that can be approved.
Out of curiosity, could that program be enforced at Sun Splash Park as well?
At Sun Splash?
Because we have a... Because we have a similar issue there too, right?
Yes, I mean, it is the same type of situation. It's a county park. They have some rules there that we can now enforce. There's already some surveillance there. I don't know if they'd have the same interest in installing cameras. That was kind of why we ventured into this kind of partnership. If they would cover the cost, but it's our cameras, the benefit is, we'll have access to them. They'll be visible to our officers in different various locations within the city, like the precinct, for example. The officers will be monitoring them as they're in and out of those areas. They'll see activity that's going on and be able to address it quickly.
Are you seeing an uptick at all, police code, in, an uptick in homeless on Beachside, as well as Magnolia, as well as Beach Street?
There has been a small influx just recently. We go through these through various times in the year. In the state of Florida, we have, generally have a large homeless population that migrates kind of throughout the state. So, as enforcement kicks up in one place, or they're encouraged to move from one area to another, and the officers have reported back to me that some of the people are coming into contact and just recently come into the area from other places within the state. So, there is some kind of influx, and we are addressing that. And we, like you mentioned, Magnolia, under the bridge, Glenview, Grandview, the 300 block of North Street.
Ocean Ave.
We've been addressing a lot of, Avenue area. We've been addressing a lot of those areas in conjunction with using that, the new SMART program that we've been talking about, our partnership with the State Attorney's Office.
Okay, so let's talk about something with regard to just trespass signs. Do we need, do business owners need more trespass signs out? And with the paperwork that allows you to just go ahead, make a phone call, come in and move people along? Would that be helpful?
That is very helpful for law enforcement. So, we have a trespass arrest site program. A lot of people know about it, but there are a ton of businesses out there that either just don't know about it or don't participate in it. It's a program which you can sign a document, which basically allows us to be able to enforce trespass on your property. And then you just have to comply with the form. It shows you what kind of signage you need to have on your property. You install that signage, and then ultimately we come and check it off. We add you the list. It is very helpful for us because, you know, there's, we have a lot of private property in the city, and some of it's watched very, it's used every day. So, their staff kind of monitors it and keeps people moved along. But there's a lot of property also throughout the city where there's nobody there, it's not in use. So, giving us the ability to be able to patrol that and assist with that, it does, it does discourage the loitering, camping, gathering in those private properties.
What is the cost of the sign, do you know?
It varies. They can use, we can usually use, they can usually find something at Home Depot or something that will adequately meet the standard of the program. Or they can order them or have somebody print them. And it really varies, depends on how much they want to put into it.
So, am I allowed?
And the installation of.
Am I allowed with my Bike Week funds to, to give a percentage, to give a few hundred dollars to code enforcement, where they could then go to the businesses and say, look, we have a sign for you, if that's the holdup. If you haven't gone to Home Depot, paperwork and sign and say, here, we have X number. Can I use my Bike Week funds in that way? Whether it's a business or vacant lots, I think vacant lots apply too, right?
Vacant lots would be able to sign up for it as well.
So, that's not consistent with our policies. Generally, the Bike Week funds go to 501(c)(3)'s for public programs. Now, you could make an exception to your policy, of course, but, but you would need to do that.
But it, but it is a city function, in a sense, right? Is it a city?
It would be a service.
It's a city service.
As long as the commission determines, I'd say, public purpose, we could certainly do that. It'd be somewhat like a grant program. We'd provide funding through, through our Bike Week fund.
And I say that because I envision the business person or the person who has a lot or a piece of property, it's open to all of them, not understanding what to get, what to buy in the paperwork. So, if we give them the package, say, look, here's everything you need, fill it out while we're here, turn it back in to us, it just makes it quicker, because it needs to be done to help the rest of us, right?
It would streamline the process if we were able to hand them a sign, do it there. We can advise them where to place it, so that when, we don't have to come back for inspection to see that the signs were installed correctly or in the right place.
A business does not have to have a sign that says, "No trespass." They sign the document, and you tell someone they can't go back on their property, and that person goes back on their property, they can be, oh, I'm sorry.
So, are we going to have every business in Daytona Beach be provided with a white sign that says, "No trespassing"? Or can they just sign the document? If the person keeps going to that property, we can have them remove and incite them.
There's two different ways to use trespass, right? So, what she's referring to is a sign that's telling them you can't trespass on the property, and it's giving us the authority when the business owner is not there.
But you have that authority, someone gives you a document that they come and sign in, and it doesn't say, "No trespassing." You can still have the person removed if you tell them that.
Yes, so if a business owner calls us to the location, they're there, and they want somebody removed, we can absolutely notify them, issue a trespass warning to the business. They keep that there at the business in case if that person returns, and they summon us back if they return. This is, that's a situation where you're talking about an occupied and in-service business. But what I think we're talking about is that if you have a, like a vacant business, a vacant structure, or you have a business that just closes, like it closes at 11 o'clock at night, and they want police to patrol the area and be able to take enforcement action for people who would be trespassing when they're not there. That document gives us the authority to be able to make those arrests or to address trespassers on the property.
Does that need a sign?
Yes, that would, yeah, yeah, would, the law would require that there be some notice to the individual that they're not allowed to trespass.
So, this is basically a funding question. If you determine there's a public purpose to providing signs to businesses upon request, you can fund it through the Bike Week funds, or you could direct the city manager to, to fund it through a separate program. But, but certainly, I think it meets the public purpose test, if you so decide.
So, you can use your Bike Week funds.
So, I'd like to at least start the program as a little bit of a test. We see how many we can buy, hope it's not too much of a burden on you. But I would like to just start off with $250, and I want to know how, I'd like to know how many that would purchase for us to start, and then we just take it from there.
I'd have to check to see how many that would purchase and then.
No worries.
Work with the program.
100%.
Would they have to amend the policy, you said?
Well, this will be the amendment. We'll just make a motion, we'll have public comment, we'll approve it, and we're off and running.
And I'll check in with you to kind of see how many ticked us up on whether it was a good result or not.
So, do we need Commissioner May to make the motion?
Do I make the motion?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so I make the motion that I contribute $250 toward the signage for the police and the code to put out trespassing signs and purchase the product for my Bike Week funds.
Motion, you have a second?
And it looks like I'm going to have a speaker.
Public comment, yes, sir.
You can fill it out.
Reddick, can I pull it up?
Yeah.
Captain Lee?
Good evening, my name is Reddick Brown. I'm going to speak on this issue. Yes, we should be helping our police department. I also own a piece of vacant property. I bought my own sign with my own money. I don't run a business. I pay my property taxes, I take care of my properties. That's what code enforcement is for. And I don't see it, think that it's fair to give gifts to businesses that just don't feel like it and burden our police department with multiple calls. As you know, in the last event with the trucking issues that we had, our, our police department was stressed to the maximum. And they did an outstanding job with what they had. I, I am just not in favor of stressing our police department because businesses fail to put a sign. I would recommend that when they do their application, if you want to have police support with no trespassing, put up a sign. They're not that expensive. If you're running a business, you can afford it. Thank you.
So, I would agree with you, but that has not happened. And what's happening is the businesses around it are suffering, the residents around it are suffering, and we have to try and do something to initiate, to start something.
But how about if you suspend the application if they don't have a traffic? Like, my, my suggestion was, if you're going to have to burden the police department, then it's on you to take care of the trespassing problem.
Sure. So, so one second, wait, wait, one second. Captain Lee, in fairness to you, is this a burden? Would this be a burden or a help?
I can't imagine that it would be too much of a burden to get some signs. And we're already delivering this paperwork to people when we identify a problem or having this type of issue with a business or a property. You know, if they, they express to us that they can't get the sign or they need the sign, this would be an opportunity for us to be able to help those people out and provide that.
Thank you so much. Okay.
And I do have another public speaker, if you want to take, Mr. John Nicholson.
Yeah, that's what he calls him, John Nicholson, your friend. Yes, sir, Mr. Nicholson.
I happen to have gone through the same thing. All right, there's a property across the street, the homeless were sleeping on it. It took six months to go through this. But we have a sign department that makes signs. So, if we get it in-house, it'd be a heck of a lot cheaper. And I think you'd probably get 200, 300 signs, or maybe 400 signs for that amount of money. We would need that many. But basically, what it is, is that they are not allowed by law to help us in the neighborhood. And two, those signs are not readily available. All right? I had to go to four stores to get it. It took three days to get it and give it to my neighbor so he could post it. And what they do is they tear them down. So, the homeless see it, and a very nice cop told them that if they tear it down, then they don't have to worry about it. And so, they would just tear it down. So, it's very difficult unless they go through the police procedure and get that document signed. So, two, it's very cheap. It should be done, so the cops can just hand it, and everything gets done right away. Rather than get back and forth, back and forth, back and forth. It's all done, sign sealed and delivered, and it helps the neighbors. Thank you.
So, still moving on here, sorry about that. Couple of things.
We didn't vote.
Oh, we have to vote on it?
We got a motion, we got a second. All those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
All those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries 6-0.
Okay, so I'm still at it, I'm sorry. This week, I went to a, I went to two events. I saw the mayor at one event. It was the, maybe you're going to speak about it later, I can hold it if you want to. I'm not, okay. It was Home Spring Hope, and they installed a family of four into a home on, I want to say it was Ellen Road. And it was fantastic to the family, and they were very happy that they had a nice home, and they were paying rent before. I appreciated the concept of homeownership. Following that, I went to an event with Ms. Lucy Desmore, who's in the audience right now, at Mid-Florida Housing, who also partnered with the event at Home Spring Hope. And there I saw workforce families. I met five couples who each represented the workforce community. And what impressed me was that they were first-time home buyers. First-time home buyers, and they were ready to do it. And what was interesting was that they were workforce, moderate income. And what I learned was that we have help and assistance for low-income, low, low-income. But when you hit that moderate cap, suddenly, there's less for you there. And yet, these are the people who are actively working and have been working for years, and they're so close to getting where they need to be. So, I'd like to know if there's any research we can do to see if we can change the cap, if there's any funding available for them, because these were hard-working Daytona Beach residents. Their subdivision will be in Shady Oaks. I saw the plans, I met the people, and they exist. And they were excited to be first-time home buyers. And they were doing the financing, doing the work, doing the training, and it was heartwarming to see it happen. If we could help homeownership in Daytona Beach, I think that would be wonderful. So, that was this week. So, two back-to-back home events. So, if we have questions, Ms. Lucy is right there. All right, moving on. We are speaking about affordable housing, and I'm obviously in support of it. And my concepts for affordable housing deal with homeownership. I think it's, for me, the way to go for communities, as I saw. I recognize there are multiple ways that we can do this. I sense that we're going down the road of affordable, sorry, accessory dwelling units, and we've been having this conversation on the commission for a while now. I would like to know if we could have public workshops and weigh-ins from residents in all zones. I'd like to hear and know, and for them to understand the impact on their communities, both positive and not, to have the accessory dwelling units in their backyards. I'm not sure that people understand what the ADUs represent, both positive and not. And I would like to know if we could make that happen. And again, we seem to be including the community in so much, all aspects of the community. And I think people are welcoming the opportunity to weigh in.
I, I believe in community engagement, but I think that even from this last engagement effort, we have to remember that if you tried to do it in all zones, you're probably going to, you're over, it's a little bit overkill. So, I, I mean, I think if you did two or three of them, I think it would suffice the city. You just say, everyone come to this location, two or three central locations. That's just my opinion.
During the agenda prep, Commissioner May and I had a discussion about this, because this was going through the planning process. We're going to get with Deputy City Manager Morris. And prior to the planning commission meeting, we're going to request that we do have a workshop for them to go over what's going to be coming to the planning commission meeting, if that's your, your pleasure. And then bring that to the planning commission and to the city commission. During our meeting, Attorney Jagger, myself, so I, we're going to get with DCM Morris, and we will have that workshop to allow for citizens to come and see what they've prepared. And then we'll bring that to our planning commission meeting to move it forward, because it's something that the commission, the staff supports. So, instead of having the workshop after the planning commission meeting to come to the commission, we're going to do it beforehand, but we're still going to be bringing those items forward.
And my request is that we have it in three locations, as we did before, Schneble, because we have it on Beachside, and it's going to impact those communities. Midtown, it's going to impact that community 100%. And then, I wish we could do one a little bit more west. I just don't know of any location west that they could have one.
We saw from the last meetings, these, these three meetings.
I guess, by the road.
That it just, I mean, if you do one or two, I mean, I'm not, if it's the pleasure of the commission, we don't need to. And I'm not one to not work the staff, because I believe in letting them work. But they work, and I just, I mean, you don't know if you're going to.
I believe in.
We're just one city.
I believe in Zone 4, we are fine with what it is. I mean, actually, LPGA, they allow five neighborhoods within LPGA already. So, I don't think we need one on the west side.
Okay. I don't think so either, but. Anyone else think you need one? I mean, you, I just, why don't we just have one in your zone?
I think that that's a good idea, actually. I think that Zone 3, with the businesses and the residents there, I think Beachside, would that include? I'm going to guess that would include people from the Schneble area also, correct?
Just one in your zone. You pick the location, you got two sides of the river there.
That sounds really good. I will accept that, actually. And I, and our other, I'm going to guess, residents citywide would be eligible to attend.
But we'll just have it in your zone.
That sounds good. Thank you, I will give you a date for that. I'd like to do it.
Get with staff.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
On the date.
And I'd like it to be done before the planning meeting, please.
We'll, we'll push the, that was what Attorney Jagger and I, I'll get with the Deputy City Manager to make sure that before the planning commission, we'll have the workshop, and then we'll bring it to the planning commission and to the city commissioners after.
Okay.
With all the comments back.
That sounds good, thank you so much. And then also, two things, and I swear I'm done. I was receiving some interesting information from residents throughout the city, not just Zone 3, but other residents have contacted me about lighting in the areas. Now, I recognize that I saw your lighting display. This is before I knew about it, I had a conversation with the city manager today, did not know you were doing this. And part of the issue is that I went out at about 11 o'clock at night, and I just drove around. And what's interesting is, it's obvious that there are some parts of the city that are really, really well lit. It's obvious. The question is, not why, but how do we improve the other parts? Right? So, I can understand as a resident, if I go down one street and it's well lit, and I live on a street a little bit off, that I would feel bad and say, why don't I have that? Why do I feel this way? I also noticed that, you know, we took some time to cut down some trees. That was the first foray, not cut down trees, but cut down the limbs to give it more light, because that didn't sound good. down the limbs to give it more light, because that didn't sound good. And then, we went a second round, and then checked it at night. So thank you to staff for checking at night to see how bright it was. I appreciate that. And then I went through to look and make a comparison as well. And I came up with, I wouldn't feel safe. So I recognize that we have standards, and then sometimes if you take a look at, is this actually working? I also noticed that many people don't have on porch lights, which porch lights and safety lights and motion sensor lights, they all make a really big difference. But does lighting matter? Lighting definitely matters. I started having this conversation about two years ago. I mentioned going Jacksonville, driving at night, and noticing it was extremely bright, and how important that was. And then we started making some changes on Main Street. So I want us to, you know, as we consider lighting, as you are, on the main corridors, there are some side streets and some residential communities that are truly lacking right now, from a safety perspective. And so I want us to consider, as we improve the main roads and the business corridors, which are important, not to forget, and to include the residential areas in that lighting plan. Thank you with that. And then finally, the city manager and I, who I'm enjoying working with, might I add, I'm enjoying, I'm enjoying his energy. I'm enjoying it. We've been collaborating on an idea, and the idea goes like this. As I took him down a walk, I think two weeks ago, I said, come, let's go on a walk after we finished commission meeting. I took him downstairs, and all I saw were empty, blank walls. And whenever I see walls, or a floor, I think dance floor, when I see walls, I think, what can we put up on the walls? And so, you know, I wondered if he and I could partner on a concept and share it with you. And the concept was partnering with possibly Bethune-Cookman, Mayland High School, Campbell, and then, of course, Daytona State, and seeing if we could get some of the students to provide artwork that we could then frame and then put up in the hallways, and have sort of a community gallery that showcased some of Daytona Beach and how the students saw it. City manager, any thoughts on that?
I think it's a great idea, and I actually think that, somebody just said she's thinking, oh, she didn't want me to say that. It may have been done many years ago.
Okay, super. So it's a possible, something we can work on.
I think that would be great for us, and I'm glad you had that idea.
Okay. All right, super. Thank you so much for your time.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Cantu?
I have no comment. I think I had enough to say on Monday.
Oh, I wasn't here on Monday.
My counter meeting.
Oh, at the meeting. Okay. Well, I wanna address that, we have those roundtable meetings monthly, they're roundtable meetings of the elected officials, and usually the mayors, the county chairman is there. And very often, I can't attend, and I understand that you probably, it might have been a little rough for you, but I don't know. It was okay?
It was fine.
All right.
She handled it very well.
Oh, you mean Monday's meeting?
Oh, you're talking about Monday's meeting.
Monday's meeting for the.
I'm talking.
Volusia.
For Volusia, for the, the, around, around.
Oh, that, yeah, that was.
The one when you went to the lunch?
Yes.
Okay. So I'm gonna ask that, you go all the time, that I can't go?
I appreciate it.
Would you be willing to do that?
Absolutely.
Okay. Which is, you know, I work, and, you know, I work two full-time jobs, but I oftentimes can't go to that. So, and I appreciate that you went to that. Okay. Commissioner Henry, I know you may have to go early, and I understand, she's giving me that look that she gave me when I was a kid, when she, we were kids, and I ate the last Krispy Kreme doughnut, or I ate the last piece of mama's sweet potato pie. Yeah, I ate the last of that. It was a dirty look that, you know, if looks could kill, I'd be in the grave. But I do have a little few things that I need to go over, and one in particular that I told you I'd go over, and it's gonna take a little while, somewhat of a presentation. First thing is, that COVID-19 vaccination clinic, $25 gift card to anyone getting vaccinated, August 10th, August 11th, August 12th, we will be promoting this. The gift card will be to Walmart. And then, the next round, we're gonna come back and do this again, and we're gonna choose three or four local restaurants, and we're gonna give you a gift card to get vaccinated to go to that local restaurant. I would have preferred that all of them be the restaurants, so that way we can incentivize, support restaurants, as well as get people to get vaccinated. But thank you to staff, Ms. Goodman particularly, for executing that in so quickly. We decided, you know, once we start seeing these numbers begin to escalate, they got that turned around very quickly. Second thing I will say is that I did go to Italy. As you all know, I won't cover that tonight, but the statue will be in our midst, probably sometime in mid-September. The permanent statue to go in Riverside Park won't go in until after the marble statue goes to Washington DC. Then we will plant that statue. And I will simply say that Italy, in the experience of representing our city, our country essentially even, was totally seraphic. It was heavenly, and Dr. Bethune being immortalized, coming from the same cave that Michelangelo came from, speaks to the majestic life that she lived, and it was an awesome experience, and this is just gonna be excellent for our community. So let's get ready to celebrate in every way that we can. And that concludes that. Now, I have a presentation, and I don't know, did they share with you all?
Yes, there's copies.
They already gave them a copy?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, you all already have that?
It's underneath your pile, I believe.
One of these?
Yeah.
Okay, what about the, that's not good.
I don't think you got the letter.
I need the one that is, this right here, yes. Thank you. I don't know where mine is.
It was eight pages.
That one I did not get a copy.
Okay. I know you are. Okay, all right.
And for the public, there are some black and white, smaller copies in the.
And I thank staff, Mr. Bone, in advance, for helping me to get this together. And Louis, this is on street lighting and art district discussion. I wanted to bring these two together, okay, because they kinda, kinda go hand in hand.
I think ten for the.
We've been talking a lot about lighting, and many of these ideas come from the Beachside Action Committee, as well as a group of folks on the main, on beachside, as well as MMB, who have been talking for the last year about creating an art district. So what I've done tonight is I've combined both of these discussions into one item, and then at the end of the evening, I'm gonna ask you all to give the commission, the manager and staff, the drive to go ahead and begin to bring us something back that could execute this plan. So, street lighting on Beach Street. Beach Street, Main Street, Seabreeze, that's what we're looking at. And we're gonna see, she talked a little bit there about lighting, all lights are not equal. This is what Beach Street looks like now, at night. I think that's quite glorious, myself. And it is beautiful. That's from above. This is what it looks like on the side. That's a destination where you can feel safe at night. You can still feel safe, and you feel good about being there. That's a close-up shot. And when you're at the Brown and Brown Building, at night with those lights, they have cameras that can see whatever's going on down there. It's amazing what can be seen. Okay. This is Main Street. And Main Street, this is the best that it's gonna look, in large part because that's coming from A1A, and you see the lights on A1A going towards, going west. But if it wasn't A1A, there, it would not look that, that, that well. It's really what a lot of Main Street looks like. Main Street and Peninsula, headed, you know, east. And that doesn't leave a good feeling. It's not something that, you know, a person leaving a hotel wants to go and see. I wouldn't feel good about walking down there. That's Main Street at Halifax West. Okay. Now, the manager and I had a meeting the other day with the Secretary for DOT for District Five. And we know that Seabreeze, and you all know that we had a meeting about Seabreeze, about A1A, and about projects, that the Secretary and the DOT are hoping to bring to the Peninsula. And Seabreeze is essentially a road that they're responsible for. And they're planning, and sometime after September 28th, the manager's gonna invite the Secretary to our meeting to sort of go over some things that they're working on as it relates to roads, and relates to this particular project and others. But that's what Seabreeze looks like. That's Seabreeze again. Now, our goal ultimately is that, as they execute their plans, that they will make Seabreeze look better, and start, you know, with more lights. That's Seabreeze, as good as it gets. Okay. And that's also Seabreeze. Now, we are responsible for Main Street. The state is responsible for Seabreeze. Now, I've shown you all what Main Street looks like as it relates to the sidewalks, and how grummy they look, and just, and we know what we've done on downtown, we know what we've done on MMB, not MMB, but MLK, we know what we've done on Orange Avenue, and the amount of work and investment that we've put into those thoroughfares. So what I'm requesting is that we, before we go in to talk about art districts, number we, is that we ask staff to go to their wheelhouse, because we've talked a lot about lights, but as I was talking yesterday to staff, and I've had a lot of thoughts about it, you can't just put lights in a dirty environment, and expect it to be a more enticing and engaging environment. The same level of energy that we put into MMB even, because I have MMB, it looks 100 times better than Main Street, with the exception of one area. He took pictures of that. All of it looks better than Main Street. But you can't just fix it with lights. And a part of us, our group, we thought that if we just lit it up, that it would look better. And after I was talking with staff on yesterday, what we really need is a major project to totally redo Main Street, as it relates to the street, the sidewalk, and the lighting. Now, staff does not wanna do the wraparounds, the trees, because that really is a, is very cumbersome. But I would ask that you come back with a, with a, with some proposal as to what it would be, just with lights, and a proposal if we had an overhaul that rivaled downtown, that rivaled what we've done on MLK, that sort of a redo. Now, we're asking that you guys will come back with that, and give the commission something to ponder, that we could consider approving. But what I'm saying is that, to the businesses on Main Street, we're gonna begin to do what we've been saying, what was said here tonight. The execution of a better, more year-round businesses, functioning at a higher level, keeping the exterior of your property up to the standards that we have, I think that's, that should be a part of what we do. Because we're, probably will end up spending a lot of money if you guys approve, you know, what, what they may bring back. But we have to hold the businesses accountable for that. So, the ask is that you guys would agree to ask staff to bring us something back that would allow us to totally sort of redo Main Street. And then that, it'll be a part of going into the art district. So, would you, would you, you agree?
Yeah, but, haven't they been working on the art district right now, the LDC?
What, the art district, no, what was the question?
Aren't you guys working on the LDC right now?
Yes, those, those items are part of the discussion, but the mayor has.
Are we just gonna add your saying to this? Okay. That's what I'm trying to find out, if he's already been working on it, because I've been told he's working on it.
Yeah. Well, yeah, they are working on it.
Okay, that's what I was saying, what we wanna add to it.
It's more, what I have here on the art district is much more, is detailed, and we just wanna make sure that we are all in agreement to say, you guys go back, consider. Because what I've done is, I've listened to the people, I've met with people on, and I'm not the only one, but I've met with the people on MMB, I've met with people on Beachside, I've met with the Beachside Action Committee, and we've gone over, you know, and what I've tried to do is to bring something together that allows us to marry all of this, and then give staff the charge to put something together that really works.
I understand.
Okay. So, I have a motto that says, we leave no one behind as, as our city marches forward, towards being the great American destination. The future of Daytona Beach relies on the beautification and forward-thinking of local community activists, government, involvement, and business incentives, as demonstrated by other cities before us. That includes, art districts typically create the effect of attracting new businesses, tourists, local participation, and an increase in the residential quality of life. There's a proposal here that Daytona Beach allocates CRA funds and ARCA funds, that's recovery funds, for the creation of several art districts that are unified and seamless, yet unique. The plan would include murals, landscaping, sculptures, festivals, business incentives, and community activities. As demonstrated in places like St. Petersburg, Deland, New Smyrna, Ormond, Miami, and numerous other cities, the creation of an arts district is an effective way to attract new businesses and tourism, and to create a sense of pride in an area, leading to other businesses jumping on board to improve their locations. Art districts have a way of cultivating breweries, restaurants, food trucks, art studios, coffee shops, and more. I just wanna see Main Street and MMB have these things. You know, I wanna see these things come to life in these two locations. Our community has been waiting for this to happen via private investment for over 30 years. If this, if we don't do, do not act, the areas of focus will likely continue their spiral. So if you draw a circle around the desired arts district areas, you will quickly see that the majority of homes are investment-owned and low-end, dilapidated structures. If we wanna attract homeowners to live near these areas, we must create reasons for the area to improve. I think we're poised with a team of entrepreneurial, business-minded, art enthusiasts that are willing to help make this happen. Okay. First thing is, I think we need an art, is it up there? That's, those are the benefits of public art. Beautifies the areas, attracts business, tourists, increased quality of life, we already talked about that. All right. We have to create an art alliance board of some sort. And I've written it down, just a proposal, this is for staff to go back, look at, working together to fund and determine how to execute the plan for the creation of a comprehensive district that includes the targeted areas. So we probably, something like a seven to nine-member board, representing, with representatives from the CRA districts, citizens, a local historian, art professionals. That's what the board could look like. Each district would be unique, but required to meet the established standards for city funding. So that you'd have three different districts, but they'd be on one board, so to speak. Think about the fact that in Midtown, there are 13 locations on the Black Heritage Trail. 13 locations. What I envision is that we would have a mural somewhere in Midtown that reflects all 13 of those, of those. And then what we would be able to do is, the Midtown and the Midtown CRA would be able to have, be able to promote that when people visit Daytona Beach. Go visit all of these Black Heritage Trails, and come to, maybe you could come to our Welcome Center, or to some center, and receive a prize, once you, or some sort of welcoming kit, once you've shown that you went to all 13 of those sites. Oh, don't worry, my mother does that all the time. And we don't, we don't get upset with her either. We just love, we just love on her just all the more. So, there are 13 locations, and what I envision is that each one of these areas would have, you know, murals of distinction, and we'd be able to run programs like this to cultivate a spirit of visiting each one. Now, the ask price to execute this plan would be, this plan would be run essentially through this Arts Alliance Board with the help of staff, because if you want city money to, to fund your mural, then you have to do it according to the standards that we have. Now, that doesn't mean that we don't want other people to do murals, who may not wanna do it in conjunction or according to the standards that we've created. But we have to create some sort of standard, and the manager actually had a great idea, that in each of the murals that is created by Daytona Beach, you'd have some little emblem in the, in the mural that represented Daytona Beach. in the, in the mural that represented Daytona Beach or some sign. And so each person that could take a picture of each one, that could be like a project, you know, but each one would have a little spot on there somewhere where people would have to be able to notice the part that makes it distinct about Daytona or some sort of logo or whatever. I thought that was kind of cool.
Where did these estimated, the prices come from?
The, the price comes from the fact that when you go around to the next page in Stage One to be started by 12:30, 21, it's the idea of having 10 murals to be completed on Main Street, 10 on Midtown, 10 in downtown. Cost per mural, probably somewhere in the neighborhood of $5,000. But you're talking about 30 murals, that's $150,000. And this is just an estimation, this is not, these numbers are not for me to, as staff can go back and just, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. But, but, but we want to have, you know, excellent murals, and they don't all have to be done over, we're not going to rush out and just slap paint up, you know, over the next two, three years even, you get this, get up to speed where you get this many murals. You don't get them all overnight necessarily. Stage One, murals on Main Street, Midtown, Downtown, paintings, planters, trash cans on Main Street, and MMB. Improved lighting on Main Street. The idea is that you would allow, as Commissioner May was talking, we could have kids have competitions to paint the planters on Main Street, to paint the planters on, and, and we could also have, we propose to have, you know, art painting for abandoned buildings. Right now, that might require some change to the LDC, you know, where there's an empty storefront, where you might allow them to paint the window to have some sort of art painting or some sort of competition for those, so as to bring those to life. But the whole idea is to use art as a, as a draw and to not merely decorate, but to bring people to the, to the area. They also proposed that this be done by, as I said, local students. We talked about lights across Main Street. Now, this is not a part of that, that would be a part of the overall redoing of Main Street, but you know how they do the lights where they drape across the street? Staff likes that much better than they like the lap, wrapping the trees, because they have to actually literally redo those, go down and check those trees every week. And that, you know, that's, that takes a lot of staff manpower and woman power to do that, and we don't, we want to, so in other words, I don't know that we want all parts of our city wrapped up with trees just because it, it seems to, to look good at that moment.
Like that area.
Yeah.
That's very popular.
Yeah.
At the Hunt House, you see over there at night.
That's right. The draping of the bulbs, yeah.
The draping of the bulbs. My mic, they flash me.
Now, a fall arts festival on Main Street to propose new art, to promote the new art district, total cost of that was $15,000. Window art for vacant buildings, as I said, this would likely require a tax amendment change as current code does not allow for window art. Going down to Stage Two, sculptures selected and strategically placed in the targeted areas. The targeted areas are downtown, Main Street, Midtown. Of course, landscaping, beautification incentives, and grants to businesses in arts alliance areas. Stage Three, we want to attract art studios, breweries, restaurants, small businesses to incentivize, so an incentive package. That incentive package doesn't have to be great, it could be an incentive package that just says that we give you TIF funds back over a certain amount of time, because all of them are in redevelopment business areas. But we have to find a way to attract the businesses that we want in these areas. We'll let staff think about some ways and some ideas that you can bring back to us Additional updates to the Main Street, let me ask the last part of it. This is an example of a mural design that was sent to me by the owner of that building right there. The name of the group on MMB, they're the Inspire Group, that's their name. But that mural right there has, as you can see, I see Dr. Bethune, I see Madam Mayor, Scarlett Golden, I see Mr. Cherry, I see Dr. Bethune and her girls, and Mr. Huger. But that's a beautiful mural.
It is.
Now, that one isn't $5,000, no, that's $10,000, is the, is the, but that's a beautiful mural. And the point is that if you have murals like this, you have 13 in Midtown, the more that they could take, and we could use city staff, like the city locations. What's the one with the amphitheater? That should have a mural on it. What's it called? Daisy Stockin. And you take and you have all of the famous, all of the doctors who were a part of the Midtown as a part of that, like she was, and, you know, she was, what was she, a nurse? Or something in healthcare, so that could be like one that you brought in, put in Dr. Crawson and Dr. Bonner and the different people who were doctors or in the medical field. I don't need to, I don't want to go into too much, but that's just the type of idea we're thinking about.
Or even musicians, since it's an amphitheater.
Yeah, or even musicians.
Yeah.
Yeah. Food truck festivals, we propose a food truck Friday that either is, is every Friday on Main Street. Now, see, we did food trucks, but I think what we did was we tried to attach too many rules to it when we tried it. Let's just let it be a little more wide open on Main Street and a little more wide open on MMB. We don't have enough restaurants down there anyway. Yes, ma'am?
My, my hope is that you're considering that the DDA is also having regular food truck events on a Friday night. I know you're not starting this right away, but they'll be doing a downtown event starting, I believe, this Friday.
This Friday.
And every, so just so we're clear on kind of some of the other events.
Yes, absolutely. It's just the idea of expanding that same idea to these, giving them, these both regions in their capacity to do that. But yeah, and I'm hoping to go to that. Of course, they say they'd like to see Main Street cleaned up with pressure washing, et cetera, and I know the staff is working on broadening our capacity to, to clean our communities up. Be neat to have local acoustic musicians at each truck area, more people, and eventually more year-round businesses. A chalk art festival, many cities have chalk art festivals. Krista Goodrich is an expert at that, she's done that many times. I would like to see us activate parcels that are unused, particularly on MMB, for pop-up activities, including sidewalk sales, art and wine walk, and fashion shows. And then finally, as it relates to this part, iconic selfie locations in each targeted area. And I know Commissioner May has talked about that, but we have to have locations where people can go and take a selfie that's iconic in each one of the three, three regions. And the last page that you all have is the City of Daytona Beach Decision Grid is just a proposal, just a discussion about how we would, this came from the Beachside Action Committee, and this is a proposal of some considerations that this, that we would have as it relates to how we would go about approving whether you received a grant from us. And that's for staff's consideration and for the, for you all to look at at a later time, if you want to come back and have discussion about it, that's fine. But the ask is, again, that we would go ahead and charge staff with coming back and bringing us something to go ahead and execute before the end of the year as it relates to art districts. We've been talking about them, the city everybody's ready for, and, yes, ma'am?
So I feel as though I have to say that somebody who's been working on this, I'm sure you've spoken with him, is Frank Molnar. He is, he's been working on a nonprofit, he's got the infrastructure in place, he's got the concept for the Arts Alliance, he may even own the name for the Daytona Beach Arts Alliance, I think he may own the name for that. So I guess my question is, are we starting from scratch or are we going to include people who already have a-
All of, all of what Frank has, has pretty much talked about is included in this, this-
I'm aware of that, yeah.
All of it.
I'm aware of that.
The idea is that we want to support what they do.
Okay.
But in order to incentivize it financially, I think we have to have our own board that the city regulates.
So that I'm understanding the concept, we're going to have a, I want to understand the org board. So we have a city function with arts people, and then underneath that, we have another arts alliance, or are, are you taking the arts alliance position on top with the city and the artists? How is that working?
The city has a board, and I just use their name, Arts Alliance Districts, but we have our own board that executes our funding. And we're happy to partner with that alliance, but it has to follow the standards that our staff comes away with. And to be honest, their focus was just Main Street. I want to support Main Street, but our focus had to be all three districts because all of them had-
So in the conversations I had with him, I encouraged him to have the entire, all three districts involved. I said the funding would most likely be more robust if you took that approach. So then my next question is just that people can get ready for this. Would nonprofits then be allowed to apply for grants? Would they then come in as a part of an umbrella organization? They would come to the city organization first, and they would, each or nonprofit could say, hey, we have this arts program, it fits this part of yours. Is that what you're envisioning?
It, it would, this board would execute our plan and the, whatever we appropriate towards this program. Anyone, you know, just, that's a business. So, and they're in a CRA. So if they want to participate, if they meet this standard and, and this board agrees to this template, they don't have to follow this template, but we fix it in whatever way we want. If they meet these standard, this standard, then they, they could utilize some of these funds to meet, to meet the standard and, and to get a, get a mural.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
I like it.
Yeah.
And I like the, the 13 locales being showcased on one site to encourage, particularly MMB, to encourage individuals to go and see, because our Heritage Trail needs some help.
It needs it.
And, and we need to look at that again as well, and maybe even have a little van or something that takes them around to the different ones, or a pamphlet that says what the address is so they can find it themselves. And I like the idea of there being something at the end that you've completed it, you know. I like it, I like it. And, and I like this grid too, I think that's an excellent place to start on holding folks accountable to maintain it and for us to determine what those, what it would look like.
Does anyone have any other questions or comments or thoughts about it? For a commission meeting, but I, I've been, I've been pushing this and working through these processes and trying to find a way to bring all this together so that it would be something that we felt was palatable and, and prepared for our community.
Mr. Mayor, it's been a long time coming. As you stated, you weren't the only one that's been meeting with people that want to do this. We say, what do we want Daytona to be known for? So this is something else we can add to our brand that can be a draw, to make us more of a destination where families would come. With, with us having a historical background with these murals, it can educate children about the city of Daytona Beach and educate families and give people another reason to come here, to accompany the beach and any other festivals and special activities that we have. This is something else you can do when you're here for a whole week, you know, other than just go to Tuscaloosa Park and ride on the Skything, you know? So I think it's excellent, and thank you for putting this together, because we've been talking about it for quite some time now. I do recall when we first came into office in 2012, that Commissioners Two and Three, White and, help me, Woods, they did an art partnership on windows on Atlantic Avenue for vacant buildings. They, they had pictures or paintings or something, you recall that?
I do.
Yeah. And, and they did that, that was a little combo thing that they did as commissioner. So I think we're right in line in taking this to the next level.
Okay. All right, any other questions? No?
We'll have something to you at the first of the year.
Okay. Well-
You want to put the first of the year?
Yeah, because we want to execute it at the first of the year.
December 31st.
We just, I think that's the date on there.
Yeah, no, we, we will work, many of the things that you've talked about, we've actually heard from all, all citizens. Matter of fact, we are staff on, on Friday morning, we're going to be talking about Main Street, MMB, MLK, and Seabreeze, dealing with many other things that I've heard over the past month, and the lighting, the trash, beautifying those areas are part of our discussions that we're going to be talking about. Not only that, dealing with zoning as well for businesses on those areas and how they can, we can improve them. So we'll be doing that on Friday morning. So we will bring something back based on the comments that you have before the end of the year.
Okay. All right, good deal. Thank you, sir. That concludes my comments.
I just have one thing, one of, the mayor, myself, and the police chief met this week. At the end of this week, we'll be sending out information about the task force in reference to special events. Commissioner Cantu, one of the things she talked about after the Trucktoberfest was trying to get all of the groups together, and the mayor has signed on to lead the challenge with myself and the police chief. So we're going to be sending out an email to all of those different entities trying to determine what date, excuse me, that a meeting will be held, it will be held in the evening. Commissioner Billy Willer with the county has stated that we can do it at the Ocean Center, so we're going to be working to be open to the public. We're, we're going to get a date based on our email from all of the elected officials, the city managers and the police chiefs by Friday, and then we'll put that information out and advertise when that meeting will be held to talk about not only the Trucktober event, but all of special events that will impact all of the different communities on the peninsula and also in the inner city. So just wanted to share that information with you all about that. The email will go out on Friday from my office asking for them to select two dates that we can have something in the evening at the Ocean Center. So that concludes my report.
All right, we'll hear from our residents at this time.
So we're going to move on to our public comment forum. Our first speaker is former Commissioner Sheila McAvon, and on deck is John Nicholson.
I do want to congratulate you first, Derek, on this art project thing. I was working on that 15 years ago, didn't come through, so bless you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Tonight, I'm here to bring an idea to you for the development of the Riverfront Park, the piece on Halifax, it's sometimes called the Main Street Park, sometimes called the Halifax Park, but it's between those two areas. We had gotten this property, been holding it for 10, 12 years, and so I feel something should be done about it. I know that it, it is an expense, and so that's not what I'm coming here for. I'm coming to tell you that I have a funding source to get this done. And so now, then why would I, why would I come to you? I'll tell you that. Let me tell you what I want, what I see happening there. What we wanted to become a part of is a Florida circumnavigational paddling trail. There's one, that's a trail that goes all around Florida, and so what we want is a dock there that would be for kayaks and for canoes and small boats, things of that nature. That would connect up, there are two more parks that are being developed, hopefully, trying to be developed up in Seabreeze, in the Seabreeze area. So that would make just even a local connection there that would be very good. We don't need, we will be able to, where are we going to get the money from? The Halifax Heritage Byways Project. That's been just, that was brought to our city here by another local person who's been working very long on that. And that's federal money, and it will be able to, has millions of dollars there, and I think our chances of getting a grant from that is very good. And so I think it's worth trying to apply for. I mean, I want to apply for it. So I don't need from you, I don't need money, that really would be a gift to the city, but what I would need is perhaps a meeting, first of all, with city manager, that would be lovely. Second of all, maybe a couple of people from the, from the city employee group who could help me to get a shovel-ready plan so that I can submit it. So that would be, that would be the thing coming from the city. I attended a recent Main Street Redevelopment Board meeting, and I saw that there was some interest there too in developing that park, so I'm happy, you know, I want to coordinate that kind of thing. So to sum up, I don't need funding, what I do need is a shovel-ready plan, and we need to get on this- What I do need is a shovel-ready plan and we need to get on this fairly quickly because I only found out about this and the deadline's coming up. There is a deadline for it. So hopefully, what do I want? That you think it's a good project to go forward and perhaps some help from the city to draw the plan.
Mr. Mayor, I would ask Mr. Drisco, Deputy City Manager, to get with Ms. Vaughn to coordinate a meeting so we can look and see if this is a viable option to bring back to you all. So he'll get with you and he'll be the one that will coordinate with you to see if this is viable to bring to the commission.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate that. And thank you all for your time.
It's good to see you. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
This would be so great because we've always wanted to utilize the Halifax River more. And that parcel is smack dab in the middle of the city. It's perfect. I mean, they can make a, from there, maybe up to Seabreeze and back and whatever. And especially, I like the idea that we may be able to get a grant.
That parcel is a beautiful parcel and I, you know, we hope we can use it.
Oh, and that part, I think it's like a parking lot that's already paved and everything, isn't it?
Yes, ma'am.
My goodness.
Wonderful. Okay. All right.
Our next speaker is John Nicholson and on deck is Marjorie Johnson.
413 North Grandview Avenue. No, it's, does not have a paved parking lot. That's the one that we purchased because of all the trees.
Next door though.
We don't own the one next door.
We know that. But let's go ahead.
Okay. All right. Yeah, I had gone around Sunday with the opportunity of finding six new parks on the B-side. We have a very, we have a shortage of parks on the B-side. There are not much we can do and a lot of what we have is just vacant. One, Kelly White came up with an idea 12 years ago. I took her on a walk on Main Street. And she thought that we could piggyback off what Disney did on their Disney Main Street. They had an architect that designed it and he went into private business. So she thought we would then find a unifying image for Main Street. In other words, have an architect come in and look at a building and say, oh, well, you could do X, Y, and Z to this to bring it out. Because many of our buildings on Main Street go back 100 years. And so the architectures vary. But adding a little spice to each individual one all along at the same time would put a pop on all of Main Street. So I think Kelly came up with a great idea. We also have a, or had a program, $5,000 matching grant. Well, to ask a lot of these people to match at $5,000, they're going to sit on their property and do nothing. If we ourselves took that $5,000 that we would normally give anyway and do it and say, okay, we have $5,000, we have an architect that says X, Y, and Z, would really make this building look nice, would you allow us to do it? I think they would be more likely to say yes if it doesn't cost them anything and we can unify the appearance of that street together. Two, they had a meeting at the county council yesterday. Ormond Beach has a set amount of millage, I think 2 million or whatever it is, built into their budget for streets. So they don't have a problem doing sidewalks and streets because it's budgeted. I don't know how much they raise each year because of that, but it's a set amount. Much like we want to do with the half penny sales tax, they do it in their budget. So they always have the money to do their roads and do their resurfacing. Problem with the design on Oak Ridge. What they're doing, and when you go down the sidewalk and you come to an intersection, they've built up a ledge so that if you're coming down the sidewalk, you either have to go left or right. You can no longer go straight to the sidewalk on the other side of the street. So when you come down from Seabreeze, you hit Oak Ridge, you have to walk to the right about 20 feet, cross, and then come back 20 feet to get to the sidewalk on Grandview. So it's, and the ledge is like. So I'm asking the staff to look at these when they come from the state.
All right, your time's up, but.
Okay.
Okay. I agree with John as she's coming up. The millage is interesting, but our goal is to be able to take the budget that we already have and sustain doubling what we've been doing and then without raising the taxes. So that's, it's important that we know that. We're trying to keep the taxes at the same level because they have a higher valuation. It's easier for them to do that. But we're getting there. That's our goal, is to raise our valuations. Go ahead, Ms. Johnson.
So we have Ms. Johnson and then on deck is Malcolm Williams.
Marjorie Johnson, Daytona Beach, Florida. I would love it if the Commissioner Paula Reeves from Zone Six would be more conscious of what's going on in Zone Six. I spoke at the last city commission meeting about Wally Street. And I noticed that the grass has been cut. They cut the grass. It was eight feet tall there. And the mayor who owned the other property came and cut it. But there are many other problems. On Wally Street, there's an address there, 550 Wally Street. But there's a house that's vacant. They have prostitutes going in there, drugs. They have trash that's been sitting out there for the last four months. I've documented it and it's on documentation. That house is on, heard is supposed to be torn down. There's trash, there's furniture. The whole house is in, the whole street is in deplorable condition. We have a prominent woman living there in that house, on that street, Ms. Rivers. Her house is nice and people have to stay inside because the drug addicts are so white women coming through there, living in the house, laying out front, the trash is out there. This has been going on for the last six months. So that needs to be taken care of. And I'm thankful for the people who did come and cut the yards. They have been cut. So they need to keep them cut because it's deplorable. Also tonight, when I came in City Hall, I had a problem. You have here on the statement, you need to, citizens need to be professional and respectful of the, courteous. You want to say the same thing about the people that work for the city. Ms. LaMagna is one of the best clerks that they've ever had here. She's very professional. Her workers are very rude, very, Allison K. Brown. Ms. Atson insulted me when I came here tonight. They were told I couldn't sit in the seats and says Thompson and Friends. I received a call to come here today. And this is a public building. You shouldn't be telling people where to sit in City Hall. They came and told me I couldn't sit here. They had people that was not related to Thompson. Lynn Thompson is in my family. My sister-in-law has a nephew and all that. So they were saying, you can't sit in the police camp yet. I have their name, Austin Mayberry and Dominique Wylie. They lied and they tried to push me around and yet I'm not invaliding my rights for discrimination. This is what we have below us, Morgan and Morgan. This is a public building. We never had this. We had Mary Golden, Kelly, Bud Asher, Glenn Richard. No one told people where they could sit. These people need to do their job and stop harassing the people. If you don't like people, just don't bother and leave them alone. So I say to you tonight, respect all of our residents and citizens and do not harass them by where they can sit when they come in City Hall. This is a public building. We want respect. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Malcolm Williams and on deck is Frederick Brown.
Good evening, everyone. This pandemic has caused a ruckus in our community. A lot of great things has come from that. One of those being that our young people have stepped up in more ways than one, especially in our community. So I just want to leave something with these comments, especially with the schools coming back into play. We have a lot of young people out here that feel burned out, that will never reach the levels of Lynn Thompson, that will never get apacclamation from this city. But they're working it behind for our communities and for our cities. And they just feel as if they're getting overlooked. I want to just add that comment in some shape, form, or fashion if each commissioners can find those young people in your zones and just give them a lift or some encouragement. Also, with affordable housing, especially in our zones, if the city's going to take an interest in it, I would ask that you guys find a couple of people and walk through the process with them. Just this week, I've gotten a lot of phone calls from people that have been moving into our affordable housing apartments that are going under the affordable housing, whatever we, contract we have with them. And then they're being told they make too much. So then they remove that aspect of it and then they're saying they don't make enough. So we've had people that are trying to move into these apartments that cannot. I'd also have a question when it comes to the city sponsoring the COVID vaccination. On the flyers, I saw there was a $25 gift card that's being given out. I just want to ask, where is that fund is coming from? Especially when we have this COVID funding that's out there, is that a part of that? And also for Zone Five, we just want to publicly state that how proud we really are of our police chief, our police department, our fire department, and all of our civic service. We have been tremendously blessed. We're not even talking about any events. I've just seen our police out in our area just this week on their rideabouts. And we just want to let everybody know that we stand with, support, and we really do love the direction that this city is going in. I would also like to make a comment, especially when it comes to the board, Mr. Mayor, that you had projected on your art district. I will also say, and I'm surprised John Nicholson didn't say anything about it. If that board is going to be funded, how is that going to conflict with all the other boards that, who are asking for funding? Would that be an issue, especially if we already have a beautification board? And I want to be able to see if we can work with what we already have existed. Especially, as you know me, I've been pushing for a youth advisory board for a long time. And you know, the responses have been up and down. And I understand you guys got something that works. But I would really, really, truly like to see a youth advisory board or a youth council come to life this year or some early next year. It's really needed and we have young people that are really unable to be on that board. So I just want to leave you guys with those comments and appreciate you. Thank you.
I know we don't answer it, but I'd just say that the funds for the, it comes from a private, these are private funds, Malcolm. And, but I am not opposed to using recovery funds in the future if we can get people vaccinated. That's what recovery funds really are for. That's one of the main things. Yes, sir. These funds are from private donations. They were privately donated. And I do believe we're going to work on getting a youth advisory as a part of the recovery. They're working on that. Okay.
Our final speaker tonight is Mr. Frederick Brown.
Thank you. It's Frederick Brown, 1508 Crescent Ridge, Daytona Beach. I'm going to preface this, first of all, I want to thank city for the support of the Midtown Concert Series. And if the mayor was there, he'd probably know it was Daisy Stocking Park. But it was a pleasure meeting the city manager and some of the other commissioners who were there at the event. My wife and I had a great time. And also some comments, responding to some of the mayor's comments earlier. Perhaps some of the monies that were spent on demolitions perhaps could be refunded by fining the individuals who were involved in some of the dilapidated buildings that fell down. It still just amazes me how these buildings were left in disrepair for well over a decade and city code enforcement was non-existent. So I certainly hope the city will step up their pace on that because when you have buildings falling down on the sidewalk, that's not a good thing. Again, I will open my comments with the public lands preservation. And in fact, it was very interesting to hear former commissioners mention the Halifax Heritage and how also Commissioner Treger mentioned that we want to use more of the Halifax River. Well, on B-side, back on May 20th of last year, the only access we had was given away solely for the personal financial gain of the son of a former mayor. And that's just wrong. And again, we talked about communication. This was all slipped under the radar during COVID. We talked about communication not being able to get the word out. Well, no one was even notified about that meeting. It was all done in six seconds. I went back and watched it on the video. So again, I'm going to ask the commissioner, you, by the way, should have all received a letter this week. Don't think the manager did, but I think the rest of the commissioners and the mayor received a letter regarding this. If you haven't received it, you certainly will soon from an attorney. We hope to move forward on this and we certainly hope that the city will consider rescinding that decision. Another subject that I wanted to talk about was crosswalk safety. I brought this up to the mayor back in March, I believe it was, shortly after the death, the unfortunate death of one of our citizens. And in your presentation, all lighting is not equal, as you stated. And for me, this is very close to my house. And I just, I'm reminded every time I drive by, this unfortunate death did not need to happen. And again, the major issue is the lighting and the signage rules. And again, I suggested we form a committee. I would love to serve on that. I'm starting to run out of time, but again, I want to remind you, I am very interested in seeing that we don't kill more of our tourists and citizens. The third thing I wanted to talk about was supporting our veterans. And I've talked to one of the commissioners previous, after the meeting, how this, yes, is a county area, but I would like to see the city throw their support behind. It is right in the middle of our city and this is an area without vagrants.
All right.
For the park.
All right. Thank you. Let's make a big.
Wait, wait.
Yes, ma'am.
I just have one question. For future, the ADUs, it was supposed to go through the planning board tomorrow. So how long is it going to be delayed for her to have her meeting? Commissioner May.
The staff is going to try to put a meeting together in the next two weeks to bring back to you all after that planning commission meeting.
Okay, because I went to all three meetings for our federal money and the ADUs were brought up and our commissioner.
So this is blocking a meet, blocking something that's.
Yes, it's supposed to go through the planning board tomorrow, the ADU.
I mean, you can, you can.
Well, why we, we know we wanted to do that. I didn't, I didn't quite understand that. I didn't know this was.
I mean, it still has to come through the commission.
Yeah, so we can do a workshop after the planning.
I think it should still go through the planning.
Okay, but it can still go through the planning board tomorrow without.
Yeah, that may create problems. I can't see into the future. But whatever goes to the planning board has to be consistent with what's ultimately brought to the commission. So if there are any changes made as a result of your workshops, you'd have to go back to the planning board anyway.
It's not a workshop. I think that's just to educate the residents on what this is.
Okay.
That's what I see that as.
And.
Get the same way.
I had talked to Mr. Jagger about any HOA subdivisions. They can not allow ADUs as well, so.
Well, I believe the current draft accepts subdivisions from.
Correct.
The allowance.
So I guess the part that intrigues me about this is that communities that this won't impact are weighing heavily on communities that it will impact. That's the part that I find a bit disturbing.
Yeah, actually, for these ADUs, it actually came from your zone more than any zone.
No, we have them in our zone. That's not to say that the residents are all happy with it.
Right. Well, that's where all this.
Exactly. And so furthermore, furthermore, what I don't particularly appreciate, and I'm going to be honest with you. We kind of don't mince words. You're in a kind, polite, friendly, and civil way. It's discourse, right? It's the fact that I'm feeling as though this has kind of moved along pretty quickly. And I'm finding, one, one second.
Okay.
I recognize that people spoke about affordable housing. So the issue that I have is that we have not yet to find what is affordable housing? What are the caps? Who it impacts? How much we need? But we're moving forward with one particular type and form. And I am not comfortable moving forward with it until we get that feasibility study that we requested. And when will that be back, by the way?
And actually, we all took a vote on this ADU and it actually passed.
The vote was for more information.
There is a state statute for this ADU, but we're actually not going by the state statute for the ADU. So they can use it as affordable housing with the LDC that he has drawn up or they do not have to go by it.
See, if we both represent our zones and we're both representatives of that particular area, already we can see you have a bit of misunderstanding about it. If we're experiencing it here, just imagine what people are experiencing en masse.
Wow, I, I'm not experiencing it. Maybe you are.
I am. I am. And I'm sure I'm not alone since I represent a particular group of people also. So this is not a simple situation, in fact.
Okay, well, we're not going.
We need direction. We need to know if, we need to proceed with the planning item and have a workshop to inform the citizens or do we not need to?
The workshop, from my perspective, is simply to inform the citizens. It's not to change what is going before the planning board or before the commission.
So have we already made a decision about what we're going to do about this? Is that decision already done? Because I don't recall voting and saying, this is what we're going to. I recall voting and so, recall a conversation saying, let's get information, not that this was a done thing.
Actually, we voted on to have them come back with the ADUs.
Okay, but I have not seen a reference to a plan, a draft, anything.
Ready to go through planning board, then it'll come through us.
Thank you for that clarification. So I'm going to say this again. Right now, as a resident, if I were listening, I would say that decision has already been made. And if it's, if it's going to be something where you're just telling us as people what is going to happen, that to me is not representation. That means that we really don't have any voice in this.
Okay. And, and what I would say is this. How long ago was it that we discussed this? Two months ago or so?
Actually, when I.
Sure.
Okay. But this, this, you started talking about it a year ago, ma'am. But my point is that once she brought it to this commission and asked us to ask staff, because a decision hadn't been made, okay? But it's staff's job to then bring this before us. If we wanted to have this moment of transparency and allow the community in, we've had two months to do that. So we can't now show up tonight.
No.
When it's on, well, it's been, it's been, it's been a little while.
At every single juncture in this particular conversation that has been brought up, I have said every single time, we need to stop, we need to hold, we need information.
No, we don't need to stop and hold. I don't, I don't agree with that. What, we, we, none of us wanted to stop and hold. Now, you may think we should stop and hold, but tonight, what you're suggesting is that we need to hear from the residents.
So far, the process has been, since the new city manager has been on board, we have changed and pivoted our process. Our process has been for major decisions, we include the residents in three distinct areas, Valor Road, Midtown and Beachside. That has been the process for quite a few decisions.
That's been a process because in those decisions, I suggested those to the commission. But it's not for everything.
Would you be willing to suggest it now?
I'm not willing to suggest it now because what we, for me, because we've had two months and, and our colleague brought this before us and I didn't. No one came to me and made, and brought my antenna up on that. When we were hiring a new manager, I started out with this mentality of being as transparent as possible. I'm not doing this not to be transparent, but if it had been brought to me two months ago and you said, let's have a community meeting, I would have clearly said, yes, let's do that. But you have, you can't wait until the ninth hour. Then what it starts to look like is that you are actually trying to delay the, the process. And that's what it begins to look like, you know? And we are, and, and regardless of what anybody says or what they think. I do believe that we are commissioned with or without a study that is full borehead on affordable housing in all sorts of ways. I don't need a study. I, I don't need a study to tell me that we need affordable housing. What I need that study for is to justify certain procedures that we want to enforce and implement. Now, I don't need a study to tell me we need it. The guy already told us, the residents tell me, I don't need that. But I'm taking that as a way to make sure that we can do all the things that we want to do because that's a part of the process. But what ends up happening here tonight is that you come in and you, you slow things down and of course, this is my process. Yeah, okay, yeah, let's have a community meeting. I was okay with that. But now it's starting to look like it's just, how can I slow this down? And I'm, I'm not for that.
So the slowing down process is for the purpose of more information to be given to residents because there are other impacts here. And right now, it's feeling as though, on the one hand, it's feeling as though we're trying to push something forward and that is the one thing that residents have always said seems to happen. Things get pushed forward very, very quickly and they don't know sometimes.
Okay. Well, let's get to educating.
The problem that you had before was for short-term rentals and ADUs. This is not for short-term. This was for six months and longer, which you did know about it. We all took a vote on this.
ADUs have their own issues as it relates to trash, as it relates to parking, as it relates to density, as it relates to pedophilia, as it relates to people in my backyard, as it relates to safety of single women, as it relates to seniors and burglary and an increase in people altogether and not knowing my neighbor. As it relates to people that have property rights who wants to live in single-family homes, who did not want to live in multifamily homes, that's what it pertains to. And I think those people deserve to know more.
Commissioner May, when this comes before us after planning board, you will have a vote.
I'm unsure at this point, I'm listening and I'm watching this and I'm feeling as though, has, have we made a decision already? I mean, has that decision already been made, do you think? Okay, just checking.
Okay. All right. Are we done?
So make sure, we're not going to stop this process.